Yeah, you too. Oh, thanks. Oh, dude, that's the one. There's no doubt. It's not. There's such a huge difference in what you've talked about before between you guys and. Cause only time you see Jeff, like, you can't think of himself as how great he is and how wonderful he is and what he does. We only see him when he wants to build things. Now, we don't push on immediate, but I don't know how much, how often, you know.
I'm trying to get my dad to tell me what he was doing because he's so embarrassed. He don't want to talk about it. It's like.
Trying to figure it out. Oh, really? Oh, that's just the word on the street that he's like South Bend and. Can I, would we end up with a nine day in this channel? How could we do that? Must have been, must have been. Yeah, I think this was his design to pick up miles for that. I mean, good for him on saving shit. He got sixteen grand out of us, I think, in two years. Yeah. I know you're.
It was right down the road from my dad's house last week. They drove by and they had them all sitting on the ground.
Yeah, you will. That's why I had to take that thing off the internet.
I get, I mean, I get like this. I'm like, I wanna email him. I went back so bad. I'm like, nope.
How was Arizona for my first time? That's what they mean? Oh, New Mexico. Sorry, that is.
Arizona's nice.
You were on vacation there.
Oh, that was a different one. That was, that was spring break. Went to Mason. I didn't plan on turning right back around. Look, Calvin's like, let's go. Guys, ready? Good evening. Broke up that little scrum over there. Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission, Monday, April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two at seven P M. Can you roll call, please?
Dennison.
Here.
Whedon.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Money. Swem.
Here.
Can they join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have one recognition tonight. We have a Tree City USA proclamation for Arbor Day. Bear with me as I read this. My voice is gone. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water. Cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuels for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they're planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Sean Dennison, Mayor of the City of Buchanan, do hereby proclaim April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two as Arbor Day in the City of Buchanan. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated this twenty-fifth day of April, twenty-twenty-two. And as a reminder, the friend, the.
Buchanan tree.
The Buchanan tree friends, yeah, will be planting trees at Ottawa Elementary on Friday, starting at nine A M. If anyone feels the need to come down and help. Move some dirt around. Okay. With that, let's move down to the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Sean, I'll make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you.
Whedon. Whedon, sorry. Downey.
Yes.
Swem.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Now I'd like to open it up for public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a motion, or I'm sorry, if you'd like to. Make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes. Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Going on, going by. Seeing no one, let's move on to the next item. Consent agenda. Would you like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sean, I'll make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Downey.
Yes.
Swem.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Carrie's.
Thank you. All right, scheduled matters from the floor. We have none. Moving on to reports by departments, we're gonna start with the clerk's report.
So mine's really quick. The redistricting, the voter I D cards are finished and they went out today in the mail. The biggest thing I wanna make note of is probably what we're gonna hear a lot of. Is that we by law have to send to active, verify and challenge voters. So many people might be receiving a voter I D card that they no longer live there. Send it back through the post office and it comes right back to me and then I get to send a confirmation notice and a cancellation letter, okay? So don't be scared. That's just how it is in state law. There's some more information on Facebook about it. If you have more questions, please contact me. I am happy to answer any questions you have about it. The petition dates are different than what we've sent. Before for the deadlines for city commissioner. After looking in myself and Heather, we have found that. The way things were done in the past were correct, but there was a new ordinance that was introduced in two thousand eighteen that is correct as well. And that's what stands. So Buchanan has always done a primary in August until two thousand eighteen. They went to just straight November for the city commission. So the deadline for city commission will be July twenty-sixth. To me, if you want to run, let me know. I have the packets in my office. Unless you have questions for me.
When we get, if someone were to receive one of those voter cards in the mail that had the wrong person, should they write something on it? Should they just put it right back in the mailbox?
Right back in the post office and it come back to me. It's supposed to come back to me if they're not, their mailing address isn't there. It's a return service, but sometimes it slips through and with that many, you gotta think that it's about four thousand going out, so. But yeah, everybody should have them pretty soon.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Okay, moving on to public services report. Mr. Mike Baker.
Okay, good evening. Welcome everyone to the city commission meeting. First of all, the covert at Clark Street. Unfortunately, I did not receive any bids on that yet. Do have some preliminary thoughts, but I don't really wanna get those out until we know what's going on with that. But the guy is working very diligently to get me numbers and he's thinking he can come in for about half or under what was proposed. So the covert alone is a hundred thousand dollars just to get across the creek. So that's where you're at with that. And then the excavation parts and everything else and trying to find it and line up other stuff. Retaining wall on Front Street.
Before you get to that one, back to the covert thing, we had, at the last meeting, we talked about exploring other routes to the salt barn. Were you able to look at that?
I did not go there yet. We have to pursue that property at the end of Days Avenue or Oak Street to get through to our property. So that's where we're stalled out at this point. So I am exploring that option. It's just a matter of getting there. So the retaining wall on Front Street. I do have a bid to run sheet piling up the hill. I'm not quite sure you guys are gonna wanna hear the number on that, so I think we need to, Heather and I have talked possibly about going into an R F P. The only problem is, once we go into that process, you, it's a long process and I don't know how long you guys anticipate that. As an emergency or not an emergency.
And that's really what we're proposing to get guidance from you this evening. Do you want to review the non-sealed bids that have been solicited thus far? And consider it an emergency repair, which precludes us from having to go through the sealed bid process? Or do you want us to move forward with the sealed bid process, which will probably add a few weeks to the timetable?
I have pursued the blocks, as Mark and I talked earlier today, about the concrete blocks, potentially. But I don't have any numbers yet, so. We use the concrete retaining wall blocks at the cemetery. You can see where the salts hit them. They're deteriorating very bad.
You're talking about those gigantic?
They would be the gigantic ones that are on the trail, the big Legos, because they actually lock together and. I've never done those to hold walls like that back, I guess, is my, it's sliding down the hill.
Are you, are you allowed to tell us the number that you got for the sheet piling or?
So I have that bid printed out. If you guys would like to see it, I just, I don't.
Can we, just so we?
Yeah.
So my recommendation is that until we receive word that you wanna move forward with a non-sealed bid emergent repair, that we keep those confidential just so. So for that purpose to not, you know, taint any future sealed bidding. My recommendation is to move forward as an emergent repair because of the state of it. And also because it's a project that if we go out for R F P, would have to have some engineering plans to get a full R F P. So we would have to have a fully developed scope and that's, that's gonna take several weeks, so.
I guess my only concern is the thrill on the hill and having tons of kids and pedestrians.
And that, that's kinda where we're at too. I feel that sheet piling is potentially the best way to go. I don't really know about those blocks. I'm supposed to have a guy coming this week to talk to me about them. Sheet piling goes down in the ground as far as it's sticking out of the ground, so it will not do this. You have a lot pushing down that hill. In my opinion, there's a lot riding on that hill. I feel that you could potentially have. Some folks over here that could solicit the schools to say, hey, can you paint a mural on the side of this thing? That's where I'm at with it. I don't think that any of us in our lifetime will ever have to see it be rebuilt again. So that's where we are with this. I don't know how you guys want to proceed with this. I will tell you that I have gone out for four other, three other quotes and this is the one that came back. And I told them the deadlines that I could present Monday night, but I had to have the stuff by Monday, so.
It is, I mean, I, I think I agree with, with you and Heather to put it out for R F Q and get more quotes to have it done correctly. Cause I don't think we wanna keep fixing this thing every ten years. I, I'm curious what we can do to keep it safe in the meantime, other than just close the sidewalk. I don't know that there's anything we can do, though.
If I start digging on the backside of that wall, it's just gonna, I don't have any way to stop it.
I don't have any issue waiting two more weeks.
Oh, it's gonna be more than two weeks though, because I'll have to have an engineer develop the scope of work. So I'll have to hire an engineer and that, so it's gonna be quite some time.
It'll, it'll be fall. I mean, basically.
It'll be, best case scenario, if they get all the supplies without supply chain issues, it'll be fall.
At this point, you're still looking at weeks before we can get the sheet piling to do the job. And they're checking to see, this fellow actually sold some stuff to Michigan Aggregate. And he's checking to see if they ever used it or if it's still there and he can possibly buy it back and use it for what we're, we're doing.
So I don't know what sheet piling is, but I'm concerned about the design element of it, being it's an entry corridor pathway to the community.
So sheet piling.
And I hear sheet piling. It doesn't sound very sexy to say the least.
Docks down at the, at Lake Michigan that are the metal. They lock together as they go in. You put them next to each other and they lock down as they go into the ground.
They're, they're gonna resemble what you see, those noise reducers on highways, where they're steel and then they put panels in between them.
Concrete panels.
Yeah, but there'll be the steel. There'll be the steel on it. It's kind of a zigzag. I'm trying to think of where there's some even around here, other than.
Down on South Bend, was you heading down onto Ironwood, exit for Ironwood down off.
Basically, what we've got in McCoy Creek behind the, is that right?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, that's what it is. That's what it is.
It's pretty ugly.
Yeah, that's exactly where I was going with that, if that's what our actual look is gonna be. So when I said two weeks, I meant because I'd like to hear what the concrete blocks cost come back at. I, I appreciate the salt aspect of it, but I don't think it's gonna degrade that quickly that we couldn't at least do that. The number that we can't say that when it gets us to that point that we could at least put it in the budget for something like that. Isn't all the concrete that's there as a sidewalk getting hit with salt all the time anyways?
But you have, those blocks are open-faced. They're not a, a closed surface. Those blocks have a porous front because they're, they're. Like an unfinished or broken off.
Yeah.
Like a retaining wall block. I'm, I'm serious. Drive out, drive out to the cemetery, you can see literally where the salt has hit those blocks. It's, they're just in stones.
Yeah. That's kinda what I was thinking, was a retaining wall style block there, design wise.
So these, these blocks, size-wise, we will have to move them with a excavator or.
A loader or something.
Yeah, they're, they look like Legos and they're probably two foot wide by three or four feet long, something like that.
I did, I think that's a more attractive look if you go down the trail and you consider that where that would be in the entrance to our town compared to these sheets and metal. And you and I had talked about it, but I, I still do think aesthetically, I mean, they do it, you go down to Indianapolis, you know, there's, there's some ritzy areas that use that and they use the higher-end ones and that same way. Don't you have any concerns about, you know, if it's gonna take an engineer a while to spec that out? If we just throw something out there, or if we just threw a wall up there without hiring an engineer to do it? You know, we could be putting something up that isn't, doesn't have the longevity. Granted, that would last thirty-plus years, but.
And there's, there's a lot of pressure pushing on that wall, I mean.
That, that's where I'm at with it. I, I don't know what you're gonna hold those blocks back with as much pressure as you got pushing down the hill. And I, I know that it's not exactly an aesthetic look that you're going for, but if you painted it and made it. They're gonna put a cap on it. It would have a cap over the top of it, so it wouldn't be a rough edge at the top. So it'll be a flat, like a six-inch piece.
So is the four hundred and twenty-eight linear feet all the way down to the parking lot by?
Yes.
Okay. The actual part that's pushing in is only how long, because the, the timbers don't go all the way down there, right?
Right. Well, no, the timbers go all the way down.
All the way to smokes?
Yeah, all the smokes. But I think the woods, that all those trees are hoping to.
I actually have a map that Tracy drew when he measured it all out. I only have one because he drew it out. But from Hovens, you go about thirty-eight inches at twenty-four inches high. Or thirty-eight feet at twenty-four inches high and then it goes to thirty-six and then forty-two and then forty-eight for about a hundred and sixteen feet. And then it drops back down to thirty inches and then for an additional forty feet. And then it's four hundred and thirty, well, all the way to the end, it's four hundred and thirty feet at eighteen inches, so.
So if you were to contact an engineer, do you have an engineer in mind that you're gonna?
No, I'd probably make a few phone calls and compare pricing.
Would it be okay if I did that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a couple of engineers who I could ask for recommendations on how to support that wall and might be able to get some free design work.
I didn't know that there was dead men in that wall, but then if you drive up there, you can see that there's, they got them sticking out and there's a six by six. That's in the wall straight back. But if you look at that hill where it's pushing out, you can actually see where it's broke away from the rest of it and it's pushing downhill.
Okay.
So.
I mean, if you're okay with it, I'll try and reach out to an engineer tomorrow and have some answers by the end of the week on if we can get some design work.
How long, sorry, how long is the section that is pushing out?
Um, roughly a hundred and sixteen feet.
All right.
But I don't know that you can dismantle to a hundred and sixteen feet and then use the rest of it.
Right.
That's where we're at with this. I mean, it's just gonna be a situation, so.
I mean, I think, just my opinion, I think it warrants doing it correctly and just being done with it. I mean, we have the potential of a whole lot of mud being on, on that street if that hill washes out.
I'm concerned about how much time it's gonna take overall and if we have the thrill on the hill at all because of that still not being finished.
Well, the thrill on the hill will be down the hill, uh, right about at the four hundred and thirty-foot mark is where we start the thrill on hill, in that range somewhere.
Yeah, right in front of that house in the back.
That's true. It is down quite a ways.
It is. And historically, everyone uses the other side of the street.
We're, we're probably thirty or forty feet up that hill at the, at the eighteen-inch height. In that range there.
I guess when, when we're laying out the thrill this year, we just need to make sure that no one can walk on that side of the ramp or.
Yeah, so there's. In years past, they never, there was nobody up that way anyway. They, they stayed down by the thrill.
Temporarily. Is there any way we can go on the backside of it and dig it out with a backhoe and they lay reinforcements in there? Tie it all together?
I don't know that I'm comfortable with digging that out because of all the pressure that's pushing on it.
I think it would make it worse, honestly. I think my cave towards the road.
Yeah. And there's huge trees at, at Hovens where this is really pushing. That's where there's huge oak trees. Five, six foot in diameter, probably even bigger than that, that are there pushing on that.
So I'm in favor of R F P in both projects because of their size and scope.
The covert, you mean?
Both of them, yeah. And then I don't know if it makes sense to throw some of those concrete barriers up against that since the sidewalk's shut down to hold the wall up a little more. I'm sure you can come up with something creative to keep it from moving, but.
The only problem is, is if I put those concrete barriers up there and it falls over and pushes them out the street.
Isn't the whole street's gonna be full of dirt and trees and mud in that situation anyways?
I'll stack them up there.
I mean, something to reinforce it while we get proper engineering done so we can do it the right way the first time and. On a project of this size and this spend, I wanna, I would like to see a sealed bid process on it.
That's where we were at too when we got the bid, so that's.
I think we should let somebody who knows what they're doing do it.
Yeah.
But I'll see if I can give us a design for the wall though, or a couple of different options for one with masonry, one with steel and.
I think that's the same thing with the covert. I think that, I sent you guys a link. I think Heather, I copied Mike. I don't know if I did either, but. There was a website describing the differences, the, the potential to do a bridge instead of a covert. I realize that you're apprehensive about the bridge, but I'm not quite, I wanna understand what are the, did, I know you said there's one annual inspection, right? But is it, is it extremely time-consuming? What is the apprehension with the bridge?
Doesn't have any constraints on us. We have to solve it out because we don't have licenses to inspect the bridge.
We'd likely partner with Spicer Group, who we already use for MS four. They do a lot of bridge inspections. If memory serves, we used to get, I wanna say it was around three hundred per bridge. But we had, and I'm speaking of my previous community, but we had close to twenty bridges that we had inspected. And so it's probably gonna be a lot more per here since it's mobilization cost. That's, that's my point. I don't think they would charge us only three hundred dollars. If I had to guess, I'd say they'd make it close to a thousand.
I wanna say it was more than that. We had Whitman do the last assessment. That Susanna was the one, they're, they're the ones who handle our bridge inspections and have. Since they've added in, I guess. So I don't have numbers on what it cost, but it was not a thousand dollars.
Oh, right, absolutely. But if you're looking at a thou, a hundred thousand, right, on the covert currently, and that's without any kind of site work, that's just the.
That's just buying the covert.
Covert itself, right? And once again, I don't have any bridge pricing, but I'm just, I, I think.
Once you classify it as a bridge, it's a whole different animal.
Right. I think where Mark's going is we'd like a better understanding of the two comparisons.
Yep, which is why I'm kinda glad I don't have numbers from anybody else because. We literally have a guy throwing numbers at us for, well, we had two people throwing numbers at us for preliminary bridges or, or culverts at this point, so.
As long as everyone's comfortable with us making some spends to get the engineering, because we can't get those answers with all those engineering spends, so.
I mean, we're at a point now where we can't use it anyway, right? So, yeah, we need to, whatever it takes to get, move forward on that aspect of it.
I don't wanna go too far down a rabbit hole, but this conversation reminds me, we were, we were going to look into having. A, a city engineer that we used all the time. Where did we have, did we ever?
That was if we were to, when we engage on the Front Street reconstruction project, they were, Heather was talking about like getting a subcontract, like a contract worker for. Couple of years, it sounded like. Is that the same one?
Yes, we, we could consider moving that up with these new engineering concerns that have been brought.
It just seems like we always have something. We're needing some engineer to tell us how to do something, anyway.
Yeah, I can explore that as well.
That was a contract position though, not a city position.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah. But it would be nice to have somebody you could just call and say, hey, another one for you. Not have to go looking for them. But if, if you're okay with me giving me a couple of days to try and get some.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're willing, that'd be much appreciated, for sure. If you have connections, absolutely.
And I'll wait to hear from the concrete guy on the blocks and see what we can do there. So the next on my list are the Bobcat proposals. So I have a proposal from, well, about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I got a phone call from Todd at, at Bobcat and he said, hey. Coming up in September, you guys are due for your last payment on your tool cap. And I said, well, I thought we owned that. And he said, no, you did not purchase lease type agreement to where you paid. Biannually payments to own your machine. So, which brought him to the cemetery to look at our equipment to say, what would it cost me to trade in, because we just talked about this? What would it cost me to basically trade it in and get something different? So the new version of that, basically, we used their machine for thirty thousand dollars for two years. And it's still the same price to buy a new one. It'd be sixty thousand, sixty-two thousand, but they would buy out our other thirty thousand of the lease. So essentially, we've used a tool cap for thirty thousand dollars for two years and then we would purchase this new one. And then if you wanted to get into the cycling them out, as we talked before on the equipment. The problem is, these have a window and if you get outside that window like another two years, you're looking at eight thousand dollars like we did with the last one. So there's a very slim window with these and then they're used up basically as, and you get nothing for them, so. That's the first one. And so they would buy our thirty thousand dollars out of our other contract. We would get a brand-new machine. And it would be for, all set up the way we need it for sixty-two, six ninety-seven. We would buy it outright the first time. And then work on the trade deals.
Which is, which is what we did with the one you have now, right? And I think we paid sixty-two or sixty-four for that, didn't we?
Well, we didn't pay for it all.
No, I mean, we paid half of it.
Yes, yes.
So we're leasing it though, correct?
No, we are.
Well, in theory, yes, because if you wanna trade it in.
We didn't pay for it all upfront. No, I understand that, but I'm just wondering if, um, now that we can't find this agreement.
No, I understand that, but I'm just wondering if, um now that we can't find this agreement, it. It's like a fugazi, right? What I'm curious is is that if the maintenance was included in that and we didn't take it back to them to do it, because if we look, they have a two thousand dollar, if that's the same one.
Did did we have to do any major repairs to the one you have now?
So I did, I had to put wheel bearings on it, um.
In two years with six hundred hours?
We were very upset. Originally, I was told it was under warranty, so we took it to them, otherwise I'd have done it in the shop on the floor. Um we were told it was under warranty, they did the work and called me and said, hey, uh your Bobcat's done, your tool cap's done. Okay, great, we'll be there to pick it up, yeah, it's thirty three hundred dollars.
So it wasn't under warranty?
I said, well, what happened to warranty? Yeah, we we couldn't warranty those. So I don't know why or what deal that they had worked, this is where we don't know what they worked with.
Did you place all four?
They had to replace all four of them, now, the funny thing is, is that we burnt through a set of tires on that thing in the first year. Of the the turf tires that we put on it, and we didn't think any of the wiser because we run it a lot on the street. So we thought, well, that's, but then we only put six hundred hours on it in two years.
Just I'm perplexed at the fact that I I if we could find that, is there any possibility you could ask them for the document that we had originally signed, but not in the manner to which that? You're indicating that we wanna know exactly what's in the details of this agreement?
Yeah. Well, I I had forwarded that to Cala, actually, I found the original quote, but I couldn't find anything that said. This is, that showed our discussion about how we were gonna pay for it or if there was payment, I couldn't find any of that information, all I found was. And I think the quote actually does show this payment for this many months or or what, it shows how it's split up.
I couldn't even find the quote, in the minutes there was no price listed or any discussion, it was just a motion made and just for, it says tool cap.
It's just unusual that we would have something that was leased or rented and we had to expense it. Sounds like quite a bit to maintain.
Well, it's my understanding it's not a lease or rental, it's ju- it was a purchase just with an installment payment, like we're just making payments to a dealership kind of deal.
Maybe we do look in, maybe do they offer a lease option?
They do, yes.
You should, as municipal, our coffers are big enough to where we should be buying equipment outright, we shouldn't be in loan payment programs.
Yeah, no, I would.
As a municipality.
Question comes to mind is if, why do you wanna do business with these people if their equipment doesn't last a year?
It's really the only piece of equipment like it that's on the market that would serve a purpose for us. Uh we use it in the cemetery to haul dirt and we use it all over town, um it's a, it's a wonderful vehicle. I guess I personally, I didn't have time to pay attention to how fast it wore off the tires, I didn't. If you remember, I brought that thing down here to the commission. It was eight, ten months after that when we actually bought the thing. And then we, it took until almost, said December before we got the new one. So I don't think I really realized how fast it burnt the tires off it, to be honest with you.
Haven't even had it two years then, you've had it a year and a half.
In September will be our second payment, so.
Yeah, that we, it was on our agenda in July of twenty twenty.
Documented on this vehicle?
You should have a copy of that or have a copy of that, it should be, but I do have, I do have this sheet that we printed out.
So would the, would the replacement vehicle be the exact same thing or?
Uh it is the new.
You guys get this?
It's the new dated version of that vehicle, I guess, I don't, I haven't even seen one, they don't have one. Basically, we're gonna order it and then probably lease ours or rent ours until we get a new one. Is how that works now, we're not just building them to put them on the shelf.
What kind of shape is ours in?
It's immaculate, to be honest with you. I mean, it's in, the problem is, like I said, we use it for snow, we use it for everything else. We weren't allowed to get it undercoated and rhino lined when we first got it, because that was just an expense that we didn't, they didn't wanna spend. But we see them all the time from Bobcat dropped off at the, on the rhino liner next door to the cemetery. With rhino lining out straight from the factory and then they take them back and that's what they sell. So we're starting to show a little wear, little rust is showing up here and there, but the Bobcat dealer was like, man, this is in. Immaculate condition, so.
I think we're, I'd like to see, I'm I'm really happy that you're trying to find that value point from where our last meeting was. I, but I think what makes sense to, from where I'm sitting is we establish that five year capital replacement plan on our equipment. And then we start following it based on when we set the new budget, which is a month away.
Sure.
And that, since we have till September on this, we can figure out which pieces of equipment make the most sense, because I'm. I'm sure you have other items in your fleet that are pressing as well and if we have to buy out our thirty thousand dollar. Installment.
Yeah.
Versus spending sixty two thousand dollars on an immaculate piece of equipment that's two years old, well, I can, that's palatable. When you sell it in two years on the open market then.
But I'm right there with you, because I think, uh we need to maybe sit back and think about what else do you need in the next year or two? And decide if it's immaculate, maybe we should just keep it and finish paying for it and run it to the wheel.
That's what we did on the last one, and I don't know what we got when we traded that one in, but.
I I think there's a timing.
Yeah.
Piece that.
There definitely is, and and all this equipment, I've said it for a long time, you got a certain window when it's worth something and then it's literally worth nothing, so.
I like that, that's where our head's at though.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's any super rush to make a quick decision tonight, um.
I just wanna bring to your attention, and it happened to fall into my lap and the guy's been on my case, so I said, we're gonna talk about this and.
I can you.
Tell me, give us a better deal and we'll think about moving in.
For the next, for the next meeting, can you ask him to supply us with some lease options, just out of curiosity?
Yep.
And then, I I'm wondering if there, isn't there a Bobcat place on nine thirty three too?
Yeah, there is.
We could inquire to see what they have.
Todd, Todd is the salesman for this area, he's the regional salesman for for this area, so he works out Alcart and Isles and.
But they're two different things, aren't they, isn't that Bobcat in Michigan and that's Hall or no?
No, Hall and Bobcat are the same thing, Hall is the forklift version of that part. So when they work on those different, they have to put on a different shirt that says Hall and Bobcat, literally. So then, we've come to, here's your five year plan, Patrick, my S one thirty skid steer. And it was supposed to go out, I don't, did it? So the quote went out to you, it's the L twenty eight articulated loader, but it's going to replace a two thousand and eight S one thirty skid steer. That is supposed to be worth. It's supposed to be a piece that's just about back right now, but we've really kept it in good shape and they wanna give us twenty thousand dollars for a machine. And I'm sure we didn't pay much more than that for it, because we came with. So, but we found this articulated loader, it's a forty eight inch loader. It would serve our purposes better for, it would not tear up the grass at the cemetery, um because it doesn't just spin the wheels when you turn. It's a actual little loader and it has a a reach on it with, for when we do leaves. We would reach and pull the leaves off the curbs instead of driving over the curbs with our tool cap and then bouncing back down. This thing is actually like a mini loader, that's the way it drives, it's a one man deal. Um it would still push our, our uh snow blower. Up and down the sidewalks the way it's supposed to, um it would just be handier for, and we're at that push point with our skid loader. So, and that piece of equipment, uh with the trade in of our, our. S one thirty, uh the piece of equipment would be thirty nine thousand dollars, but if we traded in our machine. Um for twenty three thousand, we would pay twenty thousand forty four for it.
You pay what for it?
Twenty thousand forty four dollars fifty eight cents.
So our our snow blower won't fit it, the new one?
The snow blower is wore out, it's time for a new one, which was what brought us to looking at the S one thirty. Because we were just gonna get a new snow blower for it, I can explore that option. But we've had that snow blower for the S one thirty since two thousand and eight, so the sides are wore off, the the. Fins are wore off, the augers on the inside, it's time for a new snow blower.
What tools do you use on the tool cap?
It got a new snow blower when we got the tool cap.
That's all right.
Yes, because it was wore out as well.
What what's confusing to me is when we have multiple pieces of equipment to do the same thing, like multiple snow blowers and stuff like that. We only use one at a time downtown, we use multiple.
I use them both, we have a guy downtown in the tool cats with a snow blower. And then I have a guy that does sidewalks around town with the S one thirty is what he rides now. Um the school routes that we have to do, the main routes through here, the duck pond, all the city um properties and blows. The tool cap goes into Ottawa Ridge and plows those cul-de-sacs that are literally in a big mound. So when a truck goes up there to plow, you just slide down the edges, you can't even stay on the top of it. So the tool cap goes up there with the blower and blows it, it's a lot easier, a lot cleaner. Lot less pull outs.
This one's a lot older piece of equipment. Both two thousand and eight, that seems to make a lot of sense to me. I'm a little surprised we're getting twenty three thousand, that's.
I'm gonna tell you that the guy was astonished, I have a seven sixty three tool, or a Bobcat that we've traded from the cemetery to the street department. We got rid of an old gas one, and we've, the seven sixty three, he wants that in the worst ways. But it's a better machine than this S one thirty and we like it, it's a lot better, a lot bigger for us. Um he wants that one bad and I, I won't even entertain a a trade in on it, to be honest with you.
Anybody have any other questions about that one? Anybody like to make a motion on that?
Oh, I got a bunch of motions we need to make, right, or are we not?
Well, I don't know, I kinda got lost on this one, I didn't know if we were talking about the tool cap or the Bobcat, so I don't, apparently, we're talking about the Bobcat.
They're all Bobcat equipment.
Right.
No, I'm just gonna make the motion.
Which one?
Just wanna make sure I have the right quote number on here. Which I don't, so, a motion to approve quote number MMB dash zero zero two six two V one. With a not to exceed amount of twenty thousand forty four dollars and fifty eight cents.
Thank you, is there a support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we roll call please?
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Carries?
Okay, then we're back to the mower. Bobcat is the only place that has a mower, a fifty two inch commercial grade lawnmower. They have one because a guy ordered it, he ordered a bunch of equipment, when he went to bank to get his loan, they said, yep, we'll give you a loan, but we need a down payment. He couldn't come up with a down payment, so they have this one sitting on the floor. It, Clay and I went and looked at it because for the price difference, I said, man, something's gotta be off. The deck might not be, the deck is by far the best built deck I've ever seen, I think the machine will suit us well. It is not a Toro unit, so Toro, the one place that said that they could definitely get us a lawnmower. Said, called us the day after the, oh, three days after the meeting, the other night when we talked about it, and said, we can't get you a lawnmower. They won't even build it for us, so this would be what would replace one of the, the uh. Toros with, they won't take it in on trade, a Toro on trade, um no one will give us a number on our Dixie Chopper. That Scott prominently rides around the town. To do his water towers, um but they do my deal, this is a my deal quote for us. So that's how it's down to seven thousand dollars, seven thousand nine fourteen fifty six.
Couple of weeks ago, what, weren't you telling us it was ten something?
It was twelve.
Twelve.
Almost thirteen thousand, so.
So are we giving anything up for that price difference?
I'm not.
I like this number a lot more.
I'm not, I, it, well, we're giving up the my ride that the Toros have, which is the whole, the whole plate that you sit on and everything is suspended. But it has a a select ride seat, so it does have some cushion, it's not gonna be as comfortable as the one that we have. And frankly, the guys at the cemetery don't even really care for the my ride, it's just better for their backs.
But it has all the same specs?
Yes, everything is the same, the size of the engine, the mower decks. I I will tell you the mower, I'll come bring them down here and show you a Toro versus this Bobcat if we get this thing, and you'll be like, holy cow, that deck is. It's really.
Fabricated out of something thick.
They welded it all, I mean, it's, it's not just a stamped deck, it's a fabricated, very well built machine.
How many um, how many properties do we mow?
We are still going through that, with those mowers, with the fifty two inch mowers, it only mows at the cemetery and a couple of my parks downtown. The Harder Park and the. Gazebo Park and some of that stuff.
How many hours of mowing do we do?
The guys at the cemetery mow on average, three to four full days a week when the grass is really growing a lot. And when they're not mowing, they're weed eating those same exact spots, so. That, and that's eight good hours a day.
How many guys?
Right now, we have two lawnmowers, so it's two guys, eight hours a day.
And what about the rest of the city?
I have one guy that just came on with me last week that is mowing around town. You've seen him on our my Kubota, I am waiting for my other Kubota to come back from Ozras, from getting worked on. Um I'm trying to hire another person now, I reached out to him today, to hopefully get him on a lawnmower at the cemetery this week. Um but I haven't heard back from him yet.
I guess I'm a little confused, because we had quotes, you talk to people about mowing for the city contract jobs?
We have not put, I have not gotten all the numbers of where we mow together yet and measured them all and done all that. I've not gotten all that together, with everything else I have going on, I have, I started the process. But I also got told about it in April, I guess Patrick had hit on it last year, and it just, that's as far as it went. I never did anything else with it, but um it got brought back to me in April, or not April. I was off with knee surgery, so February, March-ish, it got put back on me, um Clay and I started the process again. Um but as we were told when we reached out to some of the companies around here, it was too late in the season to get it on. So we needed to put an RFP together for the following year, no one was willing to take on this kind of acreage. Um this late in the season, the startup of the season.
But we don't even know how many acres we have?
I don't, you have, I mow all over this town, we mow the outskirts of town, we mow. And the the hard part for us is, we mow the parks, Ravage Park gets mowed twice a week because the grass grows there and it needs to be mowed twice a week. Centennial Park gets mowed, the ball fields in the back get mowed twice a week because it grows without water, it grows a lot. We mow that at least two times a week, the ball fields up on Smith Park, they don't get water, we mow those twice a week, so that's the hard part. Those companies don't wanna come here twice a week, they wanna mow you one time a week because that's what their contract is. Matt Property told me he wouldn't touch it. Wyatt Kelly told me, there's no way I can even begin to touch that, if you want me to come back two days a week, there's no way. But they're entertaining the idea because it would be such a. Such a price to mow this for.
Yeah, what I mean, what's it matter if you're mowing uh this lot here or this lot here and how many times a week you're still getting paid by the.
Because you, then they would have to drop a lot of stuff and just basically dedicate themselves to the city. So when we decide that it's too much money to pull the rug off underneath them and they let all their other accounts go, that's where it's hard. Then they gotta start back up again. So it's not, it's not just as easy as hiring somebody to mow one or two spots. I, we mow, I have a guy on a mower every day, all day long. Ten hours a day. He he could work twelve hours a day, fourteen hours a day, and we couldn't keep up with the mowing in this town, I'm telling you. And normally I have two people on mowers.
I guess so next year when we reconsider the RFPs again, maybe we should ask ourselves, why are the other communities that Mac is contracted with not mowing twice?
So Mac, he told me, March Schultz told me. He mows for the city of Niles. He mows the outskirts of town. He mows a couple of things. He mows, he mows probably a third of what we mow here in town. For the water department and the street department, and it's like seventy thousand a year. And then he mows for the wastewater treatment plant and he mows that every week and it's another seventy thousand a year. So. I mow grass for a living, for a part. I did that on the side. It's not cheap for a lawnmower, I'm telling you.
Well, I guess um, when we do it next year, we can even think about uh two or three smaller services either.
It it is probably gonna, if you're, if you're gonna push for that, it's probably going to be to where you're gonna have to break it up and bid it separately. And that's where I don't know how you want me to break it up. That's where we're gonna have to sit down and decide a map and. Once I get everything mapped out and located and decided on how many acres we mow.
I have a, I have a question. Um. When the DPW employees, like, I don't know if they fill out, do they fill out time cards?
Yes.
Are there like codes for what they were doing? Or?
No, um.
I'm just, is there a way for us to track the hours we spend mowing?
I I can do that this year because I have a guy that's dedicated to mowing and then when my other guys mow, I'll have them write on their time cards what they do.
I mean, I think it would be beneficial to know how many hours are spent doing mowing.
See, and then we have like Scott goes out and mows his water towers and so at times, there's three people on mowers. How long does it take you to mow your water towers?
It takes me an hour to hit both towers and boost your station and mow our place down there.
So there's another hour that I wasn't even.
So if we get this mower, then 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 the old mower is going to the water department, is that?
Uh, when Scott it needs it, yes, he'll come and get it. My goal is to put another man on it at the cemetery and kinda cut that down some out there. Um, and that's the other part. I, are you, I don't know that anybody will touch our cemetery with the rows at fifty-two inches and having to buy a separate. Smaller lawnmower to run through there and weed eat all that. I don't even know that they've tried in the past, but.
So I'm not trying to be difficult at all. I'm just trying to find an answer here, but are, so are we getting a new mower because the mower we have is not good? Or are we trying to get another mower to be more efficient?
No, because it's, well. It's time to get a new mower, so. That's why we're pushing to get a new mower and we were gonna push it on down to Scott, but if it's running and running okay. We could use that not all the time, but some of the time to supplement some of the stuff. I mean, we bought a new push mower for the veteran circle.
Right.
Um, and that's all that that does is the veteran circle because we don't contaminate anything.
After the new turf cap was done, you got that, right?
Yes. So, um. But the other ones, the other two, the one who needed quite a bit of work, we did have the work done because we didn't know where we were gonna be with the lawnmower. Um, so theoretically, it's good for another year, doing what it's doing. I think we're pushing it for beating it up as hard as it is. It's rough out there. The ground is rough.
So we're gonna be needing a new one anyway, and we could add to the efficiency by having another one running.
Potentially, yes, if I can get enough people hired.
Yeah, therein lies the problem. Does anybody have any other questions? How old is the mower we're using out there? The one you want to replace or stepped down?
I would wanna say the one is seven or eight years old and the other one is five years old already or in that range.
Do you have a maintenance record on that one with you?
I do not have that with me. Uh, they already presented those, I don't know what it was. Uh, it was the two that Clay presented whenever he presented a couple of weeks ago.
There were no maintenance records with that, did you, is that right?
Yeah, no, I don't, I mean, I don't know that they ever.
I can definitely get those for you.
I don't, I mean, at the same time, I don't, why are we getting such a good, why is that tractor only seven thousand bucks?
Because we get my deal and that's what they told me. You get my deal, so.
I mean, it seems like an awfully good price for for the amount of mower you're getting.
The state negotiates those deals on the path of all the municipalities in the state of Michigan, so we get marketedly low, lower rates than just general market price.
Yeah, for two-thirds of the cost, eight-year-old piece of equipment. I'm fine. I think I'll keep harping on it. I know you've heard it enough, but. After we have a five-year plan established and you come to us and say, this is our five-year capital plan, we just save thirty minutes talking on a seven thousand dollar mower next time.
Gotcha. I think what I'll do for my records on all my stuff is I'll just have them sent to you guys and send them down here from P A F D or whatever, and then you guys can just have those records. And we'll update them when we update every month.
I mean, and you know, and I'm not trying to dictate what you do or or how we run the DPW, but I think it could be beneficial for a lot of reasons to track what people are doing. It gives, I mean, the more information we can have.
Well, we we pretty much do in our, we do those weekly reports or those those five weekly reports. That's pretty much what my full-time guys do and then I have guys that I hire to mow and weed eat and pick up the garbage downtown and things of that nature, so. Generally, that's what my part-timers do, is the mowing and weed eating. I mean, at the cemetery, it's a little different. The full-time guys do mow out there. Um, because we can't get enough part-timers hired, so.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion? Here he's got.
Here's your call.
Sorry. What was this, what was that price, Blake?
Seven thousand nine fourteen fifty-six.
I'm motion to approve quote number MMB dash zero zero two six one with a not to exceed amount of seven thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call please?
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Carries?
Thank you.
So now we're round to the uh Thrill on the Hill report from Chief Gagnes and myself. Um. We were asked to give our opinions on the uh closing down downtown for. The, I'm assuming the Chippewa Palooza during the Thrill on the Hill. Um. We at the street department do not have enough street closure barricades and detour signs. To close that part off as well. Um, with all the street closures that are over here on Third Street, which there's only two over here, but those do take up two of my road close signs. Um, and I think you're taking away from from what you're trying to do downtown with bringing business into town if you close all that quarter off. Um. Tim and I talked uh earlier this week and Tim's under the same, he's not gonna have enough manpower to do both events. And then if you close down the road. We can close down roads all day long. But there's always someone trying to get around the road closures. And I realized we didn't have anybody for for the Chilly Walk go through there. Tim did a great job with his officers posting them at H N, and I think if you don't have that. And you're gonna have Days Avenue, Main Street, Front Street, everything closed off, I, we're not gonna have enough. I don't think he has enough cars in his fleet.
How how do we normally, do we go down Days Avenue normally? Do we shut down Front Street and have people go onto Days to get downtown if they're coming down Red Bud? Coming north on Red Bud?
Yeah, you have to close them off off of Red Bud. You have to put the detour sign there on Red Bud at at Colonial or or uh Central or Chicago Street.
And send them down Days?
And send them to Days Avenue.
Is that what we normally do?
That's what we do. We don't, we don't close down.
That's how it was when it was the.
Yeah.
Oh, it's.
For Thrill on the Hill, that's all, that's all open. Through from Red Bud to Oak Street, that's all open.
But during Labor Day events, if some people who've been here more than a couple of years, they recall that that was the area that was shut down and they would send them around outside of the city.
Yeah.
But the other section of Front Street was open on the hill.
Correct.
So that's the thing. So, um, just like uh Mike said, some of the things that I'm a little concerned is is traffic. The last time we had uh Thrill on the Hill was two thousand and nineteen. Our city has grown with traffic for the last couple of years. So now we've got a large section of uh Front Street already blocked off for the thrill. And then we're gonna block off another section of Front Street where that traffic's gonna come around and should be able to go along the Front Street. Now it's gonna have to find another way, Days Avenue or some of these other side streets. So we're gonna have all that traffic pushed off into the uh, again, into the neighborhoods where we just have rerouted around on Third Street. And then we usually take them off uh Liberty, uh Carroll, um, and then back on the Red Bud so they can find their their way. If we get people back to Red Bud, they can usually find their way, but once they get back to Red Bud, if Front Street's closed, then you're gonna have them pop into the neighborhoods and everything like that. Same way, um, with parking. Parking's gonna be a huge issue. Um, for those who have been around for the thrill, we have hundreds and hundreds of people that come just for the thrill. That's not including all the customers that are already going downtown for the businesses down there. Um, so that, taking those uh few spots, which you're buying around twenty uh away on Front Street. That we could be using for people to park for the businesses and coming and going and those kind of things. So those are the other things. Uh, like Mike kinda hit on it, uh, if we were gonna close off Front Street from Red Bud to uh Oak. I personally do not feel comfortable just closing that off and then having everybody over here at the thrill. Um, the reason for the Chilly Walk, that we had a big black and white slide car with the lights on and the officers standing there, even with that, they tried to go around. They're like, that's not meant for me. I can go around that barrier. If we cannot barricade that whole road off from basically sidewalk to sidewalk. I do not feel safe without having officers standing there. And whenever we barricade off, even the parades and stuff like that, you see our officers there because first and foremost, we wanna make sure everything is safe, everybody's safe. I don't want people to be walking up and down Front Street thinking, oh, I can be out here in the street with my family. Some of those are on the barricade and you have a horrible, horrible accident because I don't have manpower to man those barricades. So those are my concerns, but I just wanted to address to you guys.
So I guess to tie into that, then I guess my concern and a lot of the reason I brought this up is because. You, I have the exact same concerns, but on the opposite side, that we don't shut Front Street down and we have already seen recently with the four twenty event, there was no event. But had there been an event, it would have doubled that personnel or people, customers in town. So now what are we gonna do in contrast to that, knowing that we're gonna have families who are gonna go from Thrill on the Hill to Chippewa Palooza, back to Thrill on the Hill? So I mean, Red Bud is already exceptionally busy.
Sure.
At Front Street, capacity is limited. We already know the idiots who do U-turns.
And I'm gonna, as as we've had all these meetings, there really shouldn't be, I'm not sure why we're running two events on either side of of the town. So that's, that's just kinda, I don't, I don't know. That's just my opinion. Um, I feel that they were better planning on that part. Uh, the thrill's a huge event. I hear this is a huge event and we're doing it on the same day.
Right.
It's really taxing all all your resources.
So I guess to me, and you guys, I'd like to hear your opinion as well, we shut down Front Street, we eliminate two blocks. Even if we stopped at Days Avenue and only shut it from Days to the end of five Phillips sixty-six and Red Bud, right? So we still have the other half of town, which technically could be, uh, just some thoughts, but to me, you're almost, you're adding more control than less control by blocking off. Sections where there's gonna be a large amount of people here who are gonna traverse back to another area with a huge amount of activity. I mean.
So they're, they are going to travel back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
We've got an intersection with a red light. We have a pedestrian crossing. Uh, that's what we left control of the traffic last time. Uh, for all the many years that we had the thrill.
Right.
Um, everyone comes to the walk there, cross, and that's kinda how we lead that. Um, so those are my concerns on um closing down Front Street. Um, so.
We did also beg them not to do their event at the same time or to include their event with our event over here.
Talking about Chippewa, Chippewa Palooza, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, because of the manpower issues and, you know, it's really tough for Tim to man that twenty-four hours a day. And he puts the men on it twenty-four and women on it twenty-four hours a day. The whole timing of that event is going out. So we don't have the resources potentially.
Cause just to block off Front Street, again, from Red Bud to Oak, it takes four officers. During Thrill on the Hill, I probably only had four officers at that event at any given time. And now I've gotta double my manpower to cover the downtown and the thrill. I just don't have those bodies. I just don't. That's including reserves, that's including bringing full-time's in overtime. Everybody's gotta work. Um, I just don't have it. That's in a nutshell.
Is there something that we can do to get um volunteers to help direct traffic or?
You take down the.
I mean, then you gotta babysit them too. Right.
Volunteer trying to direct traffic. Um, we, that's why we don't use the volunteers. We use our officers and our reserves who are well-trained to to handle that because. Uh, for anyone who's been in any kind of traffic or anything like that, people get very, really upset. They get very nervous. They're not really sure where they're going and a lot of things can happen at that point. We wanna make sure people are well-trained in how to direct traffic.
And I will tell you that accidents do happen and we have, almost every single year, we have had someone breach. The barricades somewhere and get into the Thrill on the Hill. Three times I made snow on a car, on different cars, when we had the winter Thrill on the Hill. We had the one lady, the first year we did the summer Thrill on the Hill, um, have a seizure or something and crash into the barricades at Front and.
Uh, can you remind me, it's been so long since we did thrill. What, how is the road closed when you're coming north on Red Bud into town? You can't go through that intersection, can you?
Yeah, you can.
Oh, you can?
It's not, it's not.
Oh, okay.
It has to be because it's tough traffic and everything like that. We just can't. Because what would happen then if we closed Red Bud?
Yeah.
All that semi-traffic and everything else.
Yeah, I was thinking, I remember it was like splashing in the fire truck or something.
To make our Thrill on the Hill um as safe as possible, uh, Mike and his group puts those big concrete barriers up. Uh, because we don't want anyone either intentionally or accidentally to drive in there. Like we said, Mike, when they're setting it up, we've already had cars in there, but by the time it's set up and we start having the the kids and the citizens there, it's all barricaded up. So we we make sure that's a really safe place. It's just not the do not cross signs or or road close signs. Mike puts those big concrete barriers up to make sure that that place is safe.
Well, I respect what you're saying and I I appreciate um that you gave it some thought. Can you? Can you put your thinking caps on and and help us figure out ways to make make sure that the pedestrians are safe getting from? Let's figure out a good way to keep people safe walking back and forth.
I don't, I don't know how else to, that's my, I'm sitting here like stewing over, like I wish I could ask everybody in the crowd like your opinion because I can't. When the four twenty event, that was like, that's what Chippewa Palooza is gonna look like, plus some, plus the thrill. And I appreciate you trying to stop them, but I also appreciate the opportunity to do two amazing events that are really gonna complement each other well.
I wasn't trying to stop Chippewa Palooza. I wanted it to be incorporated with this.
Oh, I got it. You were trying to get them.
That was our conversation. Let's be here at the thrill and and let's have this one big event so people could come and and do the hill and and hear the band, but.
They backed out on us.
Who'd it?
Chippewa Palooza backed out on us. We offered to them to come be hard, hard.
We're gonna set the stage up in the parking lot on the hill?
As somebody who's been at every single Chippewa Palooza, putting it in a parking lot goes completely against what that event represents. So I I can re-understand that. Plus, they reserve the common.
And the common is beautiful and we should take advantage of it. I mean.
So my question, I mean, this thing is gonna be dictated by manpower, which I completely respect. So how do we get around that? I mean, is it a situation, and it might not be solved this way either, where Front Street's blocked in the evening? When Chippewa Palooza's more prominent.
When Chippewa Palooza's more prominent event, or do we not even have the ability to staff that either?
It's, again, it's.
I think it's the evening issues.
Yeah, it's, it's, if we're gonna block Front Street, I'm gonna put officers down there.
Right.
So.
Which there's.
You see, I've got four officers dedicated to downtown Front Street.
Hmm.
On those four intersections. So that takes four officers away from the thrill. Was like I said, any given day of the thrill, I probably only have four officers there. Because we have to, from the time Mike starts closing that road down, we have officers there. They work all night long, all day long, and I only have so many.
Right.
And everybody takes a turn.
Hmm.
And, uh, some of those shifts are very long, eight hours, twelve hours.
We've done all the traffic through downtown every year, we've done the thrill on the hill. And as long as everyone fades the traffic through downtown, we've never had an issue.
Let me ask a question.
Yes.
Let me ask a question, I'm sorry to cut you off there. Um, two points here, um, the first one is maybe not right downtown, but on some of the side, side streets. Can we use some of this, the equipment to block off the roads? The large, large.
Thing you want there, but I'm telling you right now.
I'm just throwing it out there.
In the middle of the road with my red, my vest on and my red truck with the lights going. And people will start at that intersection and go across when I've got it blocked off and drive clean around. If they can't get around me in front, they'll go through the gas station or I'll pull up to block somebody and somebody will go behind me, every time.
The second point is, um, I think maybe we made a mistake by scheduling these both on the same day. Whether or not, you know, they complement each other or not, for safety sakes. What are the possibilities of moving one of them to another weekend? And I don't know, who's on the committees and everything, but is that a possibility? How, how far are we into thrill on the hill?
Very far.
As far as posters, publications, everything, what?
I mean, Ashley can probably give more detail, but yeah, we've developed all those materials and, and informed folks of when, when everything is and all that. Um, we did have extensive multiple meetings with the other group and conversations with the other group. And, um, that, that was the consensus that was coming away with. I, I don't think it would be an easy thing to change it at this point.
Well, evidently Tim got left out on it, right?
No, he was included at every meeting.
I was in the meetings, um, again, Mike and myself, we both had confidence on that to try to work on these events at different times, but, um.
I, I guess hearing your concerns, my, my thing now is just how to make what we, what we obviously already have planned. How do we make it as safe as possible? Is there something we could do with more lighting down there at, you know? What time is the thrill over?
Midnight.
Well, uh, uh, probably, yeah, it's, it's gonna run the midnight, so that's.
Could we, could we rent maybe, you know, some of those big bright lights? Like you see road crews working on when they have to work through the night? That would just light up downtown, so at least pedestrians can be seen, like you, you won't be able to not see them.
We can.
Or something?
We can look into it. I will tell you, in years past, it's been really hard to get that lighting, um, because it's few and far between, I guess, around bigger jobs or somewhere.
Right.
Um, I guess if we just start looking into it now, maybe we can get some.
I mean, I'm just throwing anything out there.
The other part is, is that you have people sleeping in those apartments down there.
I mean, I get that.
I mean, really, I think that, sorry, Tim.
No, you go ahead.
I think really, I mean, the two major points that we have to look at is Days Avenue, where people are gonna be traversing into the Chippewa Palooza and then back across Red Bud. I mean, other than that, the sidewalks are in great shape, the cars will be parked anyway.
And I guess my question is, what is really the concern? What, what, so I understand what you're feeling the concern is, and, and I did it, it's, I've heard crossing Red Bud.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that doesn't have anything to do with the concert at Commons, that's, that's a little different.
Right.
Um, I heard that they're bringing down a lot of people. Well, that's gonna be going to the Commons, that's not going downtown. So I, I guess I'm trying to try to understand and forgive me for my ignorance, just what the concern is with Front Street? That we can't have people go up and down the sidewalk, come up to the red light, catch the pedestrian crossing, cross over to Red Bud and go to the thrill, and if they wanna go to the concert, do the same thing. Now, we can help with Red Bud a little bit, I, I feel I can work with that. I just don't understand the Front Street, when, when you're saying safety, where everybody from the concerts gonna be at the library and they can come in different ways, so that's, I'm just trying.
Well, there's gonna, well, there's going to be other event, I mean, there's going to be food and alcohol sales over at building three twenty-four. And, um, I'm sure there are people that are gonna be at the thrill wanting to go over to the Commons for a little bit and then going back over to see their family or something. I'm, I'm concerned about people, and honestly, my biggest concern is I've seen the idiot drivers we have in town now that do U-turns, speed. Don't, don't pay attention to stop signs or red lights, don't care if pedestrians are crossing, won't stop for anybody, that's my concern.
And, and Jacob closing down Front Street, I still have that concern, okay? So with thrill, with that traffic going around, like I said, that's, that's one of my first concerns, again, we've got all that traffic and where we're gonna push into. So the neighborhoods and everything like that.
The other part for me is parking. We use, we use the Commons parking lot, I mean, it's full of people going to thrill on the hill every year. That's a parking lot we use, the parking lot across the street, Nelson's Transfer, we use every year. That's, and then you're gonna bring Chippewa Palooza in, and not, and it's not, I mean, I'm not against Chippewa Palooza at all. They play great music, I've seen them many times. But we asked them, when we had our thing, to join with us and do it over here, because everyone's gonna be over here and then we can kinda control it. That was our concerns to begin with, how are we gonna, people are gonna traverse the town? My thing is, is they're gonna be on the sidewalks downtown, is where they should be, and in the crosswalks. People walk across the road in front of you all day long down there right now, without using the crosswalks.
I don't, I mean, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I guess I'm a little disappointed to just be hearing, I mean, I get the sense that Tim is not happy with the fact that there's two events going on in town.
Well, it's not, it's not that, I, I think that's great. I, I think that's great.
We are.
It's just, we have got to the point where we just don't have enough manpower to do it safely.
Yeah.
Sometimes we just did that point, I mean, we're.
We're an officer down compared to where we were when we initially began these conversations, which is a big difference on a force this size, so that changed the calculus.
Ask another question here. Um, I'm not on either committee, so I have no idea either way. Do we have a, a number maybe of past attendance for each event? And, and, and then taking those two numbers and putting them together, what is the plan for parking? Is it just on the streets, have we talked to the Greens about using the gym? Uh, we, parking on River Street? Or are we just gonna park along the road all the way up and down every street in Buchanan and make people walk five and six blocks to get downtown?
What we've done in the past is, um, done parking at the River Street and done a shuttle back and forth, if you guys remember back a few years ago. That's something you're gonna have to do, but again, all the local people are gonna come in and they're gonna hit them prime spots in the north parking lot and all those other places. And I don't know how much room they're actually gonna have in the Commons with parking, because at nine o'clock, you're opening up and people are gonna be parked there.
I think we're, we, we're assuming we're just gonna double people, but it's a lot of the same people going to both events. Plus, we've never had the most parking lot to park in and pass, it sounds like that might be an option from what I hear.
And then into your, I mean, if you've ever gone up to the Nation Festival and anybody in here who has, when they used to have it. You'd park six, seven, eight blocks away sometimes, nine blocks, but you still win.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't know that I'm as concerned about that, it just has to, the officers, the officers obviously not, people can park there. But, uh, that's, it's gonna, it's gonna happen regardless.
I know, I know, there, there was a lot more street.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with people parking up and down the streets.
Hey, in Notre Dame, the people charge, they can charge to park in their, in their, in their, in their grass, I mean, these people could be making some money.
There you go.
I mean, I, I have, I appreciate what you're saying about street closure and stuff. I, my concern is just trying to figure out how to make it safe for everybody.
I agree.
For both of them.
I think you're better off trying to get some officers in front of Red Bud at some point, like when it gets dark out. To, to, to help with the, or put someone there crossing guard or something.
So.
But there again, you have more manpower that we don't have, we can't produce.
So that's why I'm trying to figure out where the concern is. If, if you tell me Red Bud is the main concern, then that's where I can try to focus my manpower there. If you're telling me closing Front Street is your biggest concern, and if we close Front Street, we still got Red Bud.
Yeah, no.
So now I got four people on Front Street and I got four people on Red Bud, because just the, um, the chili walk. We had two officers out there and we had a hard time controlling the people crossing in a crosswalk where they should've went down to the light and crossed. But they were crossing on.
You know, based on last year's event for Chippewa Palooza, if you really want us to be definitive about where we're concerned, I'd say Red Bud. That intersection as a whole is probably more concerning than, because Chippewa Palooza is gonna be predominantly adults. We are gonna have kids, but the event is more geared towards adults. It, it wasn't designed that way, but I think it's progressed to that, so I think, I don't know.
Concern, I'm gonna tell you, we will make something happen, we will make sure the officers are there.
I mean, I'd, I'd like to hear everybody else's, but that's from a family perspective.
Sure.
I think adults are adults, I mean, you know the rules and.
Right.
I agree, I think it brings up a larger question for our future growth and what we wanna do in the community if we wanna have a community-wide festival. Which I think there's high level of interest in. If this thing is a major success, you know, we have to.
So when this all started going down, my concern with Chippewa Palooza being over here and not over here. You're gonna have parents that are gonna come down here, ship their kids to thrill on the hill, and they're everyone with Chippewa Palooza. So then, now Tim's people are babysitters the whole time they're there. That's, that was our original, that was my original concern with, we're not a babysitting club. We can't fence these kids in, you don't know what they're gonna do, where they're gonna go.
Zip ties.
Yeah, yeah.
So is, is that what everyone's feeling, is that Red Bud is your biggest concern?
That's my biggest concern.
Well, I think that's gonna be.
We're just here to help, we're here to make sure everything's safe, but I have to be honest with you too, I have to say, hey, we're at our limit on, on something, so.
And no, I appreciate you saying.
That's where we're at, so I will go back, I will look at what we can do to, uh, help people across Red Bud and Front Street there.
Okay. Do we talk to the county at all, maybe picking up somebody?
I always do, every year we have.
That figures much.
But again, they help us cover the, the thrill, so we do have a support from the county.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it. Water Department, Rurie Port. Mr. Monchan, I believe you're up.
It's you. I just wanted to point out there, if you guys consider, uh, changing how you are directing, sort of, like, or. Cause right now, most of my financial issue and most of my time and inefficiency has to do with rentals. And putting the name into the renters. So collecting a two hundred dollar deposit sometimes, not always, and then, um, spending months and every month, at least a day. Three days trying to collect the renters, and then you turn around and do the same process again, do it for the landlord. So, um, I'm, I'm wanting to change that, we really do not change that. We don't convert that address into a venture, we keep that in the landlord's name. Collecting them and, and put in the, uh, the co- between, put in money in the business. I have, um, approximately eleven thousand dollars right now that I just had. Just kind of went through as renters, um, that's the highest and the longest that it takes to collect it from them. Doesn't almost show, it's, it's, it's inefficient, so that's the first thing I wanna consider is, is changing that. So we do not change it over anyways, just to get the landlord's name. Eventually, after six months, I have to turn that over to taxes, then we start a whole other due process of trying to take out the time. That has a whole three-month process of getting that done with taxes. They're not all the problem, it's a lot of it, mostly, so that's one thing. The other thing is, um, we are open to the public, which I, I know we're, we're old school here, but to a point. We're open to the public, uh, nine hours a day, like days a week. Only other municipality that does that in this, most of this county, which we did a survey, um, and I helped to do, is St. Joe. They have tons of people working. We have no downtime to do billing to get anything done, there's no, there's no stopping at that window. Anything from street department complaints to squirrels, to birds, to nuts, and we don't have, it, it's just time-consuming. Eight o'clock is people setting the parking lot, there's no time to close our day, to do anything, so I was hoping for not to cut my hours, but to cut the window hours by about, by six hours a week. Just, just so we can, when our tax time comes, we do, um, double entry for taxes. So we triple the work we have done, so that lasts through February. So if we had, um, an hour at the end, beginning and the end of the day. And then Mondays are extremely busy, we're having a special tax time, we have maybe a half day that we can do this.
So are you proposing a shorter day every day, or?
Shorter days in the window, not.
No, right.
Being open, but yes, um, nine to four, that's window hours. Tuesday through Friday, uh, eighteen noon on Monday.
Is that gonna free you up enough to get the things done you need to get done?
Probably not, but it's.
It'll help, right?
It's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing in this small town, um, there's no utilities anywhere that you walk in.
Every day of the week, every, any hour of the day.
You got, you got, you got, you can't do that anymore.
Right, well, we're, we're beginning.
Huh?
We're beginning.
Right. You wanna sit with me a few days and check that out, but, um, there, we do work. We do billing, we do have things that we need to do, I should say, I need to do. And there is some, like, you've got about a two-month period where there's a little downtime because of the taxes, but it starts right over again. Um, we have, uh, uh, the county and us are separate. I go into the county to enter tax payments and then I have to turn around and do the same thing in our system. We, we cashed out a lot and we just, we, we can't get that together right now, um.
I'm just wondering, what would be better for you guys to be, you know, to get more done? Would it be better to have a whole day where you can just focus on getting your work done and you're never open? Or is, would it, I mean, really, is it really an hour at the end of the day where you're gonna be most productive?
Yeah, so I mean, if I could come in and just get the, get the day balanced, um, there's just a lot of things that, no, I could use more hours, but it's, it. It's, uh, it's a, it's a tough, um, part of my, yes. One day, no. There's billing and there's constant payments and constant phone, there's constant, it doesn't, um.
It's not as though you can move all the rest of the days into the one day and, and make up for it, right, it's a, okay, that makes sense.
So, um, that I said, most places, that they, they just, they just don't have those kind of windows anymore. You, you gotta figure it out, and you got, you know, technology and drop boxes and, and online and anything else, um.
No, I don't think it's unreasonable at all, especially, you know, all we can do is add more people, and right now you can't hire anybody, so.
And every time we do that, the water sewer rates go up and we're trying to.
Right, I mean, we're trying to be efficient with what we have, so we have to make changes.
It's total inefficiency, it's just, there's a lot of, and, and not against the public, I, I mean, I love talking to everybody, but it's.
You have to get your work done.
There is a job to do.
Yeah, no, I get it.
So it becomes really tough, really tough. And, and that's the only position that has that. The phones, you know, the phone system, you start to get better information on the phone and you can dial certain numbers, um. And that will help things too, but, uh, right now, it's, it's, uh, sometimes you can't wait in the door, you know, you can't.
Yeah.
It was, I, yeah, it's the.
How many people work the front window?
One. I have, um, a part-time coworker that she's kinda split between a lot of the different jobs too, so she comes in at noon.
Well, it would be much better if she was there on Monday morning at eight o'clock, wouldn't it? She doesn't want to.
Well, she, maybe she goes to school.
I have a problem with that.
Maybe it was the terms, maybe she actually has something else, I don't know. Just playing, playing the other side of camera.
Do you guys have any, any questions, comments, or?
I'm just curious, cause we can go on and on, is there anything that we need to do with the, besides a. I'm just curious, because we can go on and on. Is there anything that we need to do with the, besides approving that land, the landlord's proposal? Is there anything? We don't have to create an ordinance? There's, there's just?
No, if you guys just give us the approval tonight, we can achieve that administratively. We just want to make sure you guys are okay with that policy change.
I'm going to vote no on that.
And I was going to actually ask for your input on that, if you don't mind.
I mean, the way, the way that I'm set up right now is that I'm saving my, the renters, 200 bucks by me keeping it in my name, and then they just have the bill mailed to them.
That's what I want to do.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what you want.
That's what I want to do, but I want, I want it to be across the board. You do it that way, but.
I never in town do it. But you're going to bill them?
No.
No.
So you're going to sell all the bills to me?
Correct.
You don't sell landlords, right?
Correct.
Right now she's not doing that.
You can build it into your rent, whatever, but.
I think there's some people in town.
Your business partner is, is hindering collections.
I like that, I like the idea he said. He sent your name, but it goes to their apartment, right?
That's how it's set up. They are billed individually.
But it's still under.
I don't get a bill until they vacate and they leave an outstanding payment. I take care of it.
Okay, that's what you're looking for, right?
Not really.
No, not really.
They could just, I mean, all.
But other landlords are doing it differently.
Yeah.
Not everyone. I think some people are one way, and some people are, we had Wishert here sometime right after I got on asking for.
The problem is if you give somebody free water, then they're, if the landlord is automatically covering the water bills?
Build it into the rent? Yeah. It's, it's just the landlord's being the business owner. We are, we are stuck between running some business.
Right, you're being the bookkeeper for the landlord.
For the landlord, yeah. And I literally, I have them walk into my door, why are you shutting these people off? The landlord.
Yeah, that's not your, how many, do you know roughly, how many landlords do we have to deal with that?
Um, some of them are creeping up because I don't have the history because of the top more switch. And I came in literally the same day we started that. Um, melts in the files are extremely old and really hard to find things in there. Um, as I go, it's taking me a while, but I'm looking at each one of them in the tax site.
I mean, it's just, it's work that you don't need to be doing.
I have, well, thirty-five to fifty rentals as far as renters, and I have a good idea.
Well, there's a, there's a revolving door there anyway.
Well, I have a few that are the same ones and the same colors, and that's, that's all of it, yeah.
So, uh, I don't even know how to say this. Almost being facetious here. When do I go to I and M A P and say, I'm going to pay for all the electric? Semco, I'm going to pay for all the gas, and then just put it into my rent?
I think that's a little different because we're not running the billing for it.
Yeah, same. I mean, at some point I, I could do that, right?
Yeah.
They include everything?
Yeah.
I mean, some people do that.
You could.
I mean, we're left with, you can walk out.
It's your risk.
We're left with, with bills, and we can't collect that in six months. So that's operating money that's just sitting out there. And I'm saying, all of the renters, I'm not pinning, you know, but they're, the, the majority of the money and the work that we have to do.
It's not worth, we're, yeah. I, I mean, I see what you.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of money.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
And we're, we're helping to run a business, and that's not what we're here for.
Oh, right.
You know, just a service.
I say it's a service to the individual renters, like any house.
Well, but you're sitting out there, and my, my job, I'm required to collect the money. That's not my job.
But what's interesting, Cameron.
You'd be able to go after them for a loss.
But you, you're, you're doing what she's asking for anyway right now. That's, that's the bottom line is. You're running exactly how she wants to run it. In that, because if they move out, if somebody else wants to move in, you have to ultimately pay it and go after that tenant who left. Because somebody has to pay it, and you're the owner, right? So you would pay it to get another runner in to turn it back on.
And if you didn't, it would end up on your tax bill anyway.
Yes.
That's just a scenario. I'm saying that that.
But, and you have other landlords in town that are very hands-off, that aren't paying any attention, and there's a revolving door of renters who are coming and going, probably aren't paying lots of bills, not just their water bills.
And the switching on your house.
It's really not on us to pay attention to who's living in what rental. I mean.
I had it happen to.
We should be charging the property and that's it, in my opinion.
I had it happen to me in Indiana. There was this two different water bills, one for potable, one for sewer. Well, the previous tenant didn't pay the bill, the landlord didn't tell me that you had to put both of them in your name. They show up one day, they shut it off. I called the owners, they're like, oh yeah, we didn't know anything, that was in the previous tenant. They hadn't got the information from the city yet that they never paid the bill. Would that fall on us?
Yes. And for all that the COVID issues pushed, maybe it was a good one at some point, but it built up some debt on somebody's debt that I, I just, I didn't get it, I don't know.
We need the cash flow.
We need the cash flow.
I think COVID should kind of be left out of it, mainly.
I do, but it's not left out of it.
Well, I don't mean that, I mean, just, moving forward, it should be left out of the equation.
Well, it should, yes.
That's not up to us. Unfortunately, that was a state-issued mandate from the governor's office, yeah.
But what you're saying, that she's saying the same thing I'm saying, is not true.
Okay.
Agreed.
Say it again.
What, he, he's saying that we are talking about the same thing, you and I, and we're not.
Not, not exactly the same, no.
Not exactly, but I mean, your response to renters, so, yes, is one of the decisions.
Well, I think, I mean, I respect the fact that Cameron rents, but I think, um, this is about how the city operates, not how about Cameron operates. So I'd like to see the city be more efficient. And I think by stopping managing renters, we would be more efficient.
I don't, I, I would like to see a landlord bill too, but I don't have a problem with it going to the tenant so they can receive the bill.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think.
They change the mailing address on there. It's ultimately going to be the landlord's responsibility, just like in your situation.
Yeah.
An example would be if, if I was paying, uh, or if a, let's say a landlord's paying the heat. What are they going to set their heat to in January, February? Eighty degrees?
What do they manage it with?
Hmm?
You can either build it into the rent or collect it from them. Bring up the bill, just, you know.
And what about the leases I have already right now? I gotta eat, I gotta eat a loss, right? All, all landlords would have to eat a loss if, if we implemented this today.
No, but if you.
They'd still pay their bill. I mean, still may come pay their bill.
It's just, what, what happens now is a renter comes to me and says, I'm renting this now, and I put it in my name. And there's no, there's no rapper isn't doing it. And then they're there for six months and they bug out.
But they don't come back to tell you they're bugging out. They only came in to tell you they were moving in.
Then I got to turn around, and then I got to try and call from the landlord. Whereas if the landlord is knowing what bills we're building out, getting those bills, we could go give them the bills or build it into the rent. It's their choice. That's their business to run.
Yeah.
We should not be running the business. That's what we do.
I would agree with that.
And I switched over four rentals to that. Uh, who's coming in? Well, there's a couple, there's two.
We do. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I've got seven water meters in my building.
That's part of your business. You, you have, it's part of you doing business. I'm not saying you're not charging water or you're a, hey, all you, you're a salesman for getting them. Just like, yeah, right? It's a sit-down to you. Nobody wants markets. It's us all that light up.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the landlord's proposal as presented. Anybody's, is there any support?
I'll support it.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Abstain?
Four.
Um, I would have moved to table it, but he moved to make a motion to approve.
Can we do that?
Can you do that?
I'm sorry, what do you ask? There, you have to, you have to either give a reason for abstention or vote on the current motion.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I would just like to research it more. I'd like to, I'd like to have further discussion on it. I don't.
You can ask them if they would remove the motion.
Do you want? I'm sorry.
You can ask the others if they would rescind their motion, but otherwise there has to either be a vote or an abstention of the reason.
I don't think they can rescind the motion once it goes. It's the whole motion.
That's right, it's already been settled.
The person who says, who agree, who, who, the yes votes would have to rescind, or no, I would.
If, if, until it's been seconded, I, I forgot. It's already been seconded, so it can't be rescinded at this point.
I'm, then I'm going to say no, for no.
Dowdy?
No.
Swam?
Yes.
How'd that work for you?
So it fails because it didn't have the door eel.
Yep.
All right.
Question goes Zachary.
Okay. Consider updating open, close hours for the front window. Would anybody like to make a motion on that one? Would anybody like to table that one? Would anybody like to have more discussion on that one?
I'll wait until we're done on this vote.
I'll motion to table because I want to see a different layout on hours, and we got a lot more to cover tonight, so.
Okay, is there, uh, support of tabling?
I'll support.
Can we roll call?
Whedon?
Yes.
Dowdy?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes. Thank you.
Scott Desenberg, Water Department Lead Operator.
Good evening, listeners. I'm old, trying to do some sizes, but it will be. Two thousand nine, two thousand ten, I mean, I'm reading meters manually by walking around town to radio transmitters on each meter which transmit a signal to the front street water tower, which downloads that information into what's basically a mainframe computer that sits in the pedestal of the base of the tower. Those reads are then told by Jill when it comes time to improve billing. Uh, the company that provided that hardware and software for us is called Census. Um, they are led by Aetna Supply Company to us. System has worked well by and large for the last twelve years or so. On April second, we stopped to get, having the ability to access those read spaces. Um, it's happened times in the past where there would always been an internet issue, um, a phone line issue, some issue with the modem at the water tower. I immediately got that Census tech support and started communicating back and forth. I verified that we had internet at the water tower. Census was able to pin the internet at the water tower. And what they, the conclusion that they've come to is that it is a hardware issue with that mainframe in the pedestal of the water tower. I apologize. I got these quotes at quarter after four this afternoon. I was putting my kids up from school. So I have a copy for you guys. I will email it to you first thing in the morning. But basically, we have two potential solutions that we're looking at. Um, the piece of hardware that's gone wrong in the pedestal up there is what's called the transceiver. And it is basically the hard drive unit itself. It is the brains of the entire operation. The less expensive of the two options is to just replace the transceiver unit itself with an upgrade, an addition. There's the battery that will help to work with the antenna that we already have on the tower. That option is for twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. The second option would be to replace essentially the entire setup. That option is thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
What, what, what more is involved in that one? Just out of curiosity.
Um, it would be, I believe, so inside the cabinet, you have a set of backup batteries. You have the transceiver unit, you have all the power, um, because everything's run off a twenty-four volt DC. So you have, I, I don't know much about electronics, but some sort of transformer. You have, uh, something, there are four units up top, um, that do something else. I can't remember the name of them right now. Honestly, I'm not an IT guy. I, I don't do system design. But it would be basically everything inside that cabinet is replaced with upgraded equipment, and I believe a new antenna. So, you know, that option, like I said, it's, it's an additional $10,000 to replace everything. I guess whichever way you guys lean, I would just say, you're dealing with a mainframe that's thirteen years old. Which means all of those other parts up there are also thirteen years old. And in technology talk, that's forever.
Yeah.
If I were to make a recommendation, I would recommend going with the entire unit. I would replace everything all at the same time. If the other quote were less, you know, if it was $20,000 less or $25,000 less, I would definitely be tempted to lean that way. But I don't feel like that is enough of a discrepancy to not upgrade.
Not upgrade completely.
At the same time. Um, I will let you know that the lead time on both of these options is the same.
Okay.
It's about eight weeks. So we are already looking at estimating reads for the coming month and the month after that, and probably the month after that going forward. Because we simply do not have access to the data that's being collected.
Which is huge, which is important.
Yes, that's pretty key. We haven't been able to run or even check reports, anything like that since the second of April, so.
Does that affect any of the reports you have to turn into the state?
No, these are the reports that we run every day in order to.
Just for billing?
Well, we inform our customers, you know. Uh, I might call you one day and say, hey, check out your toilet, two meters, three thousand gallons of water. Listen, there's something to that, I'm sure. That's part of our ability to, we haven't had access to that data since, uh, Sunday or Thursday, I think, so. That's where we're at. Uh, like I said, I was hoping to have a much deeper discount on just replacing the transceiver unit itself, but it's kind of a hard insult to the whole operation up there, um, and obviously the price here is lost now. I can give you guys both of these and let you take a look at it, but, um, given the eight-week lead time and the fact that we're already looking at probably doing at least three billing estimates, we'd definitely like to move forward as rapidly as possible with this process, so.
So the two quotes that you have, how, how close are they?
Like I said, the, the replace everything quote is thirty-two thousand five hundred. The just replace the transceiver quote is twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Oh, I got to enter from the same, okay.
So we don't have competing quotes, so.
We don't have competing quotes. We have, who's, this is the manufacturer that did, or who you got it from.
If you wanted to bring in a different vendor, you would be looking at replacing everything.
Other components, yeah, because then you're GM.
Right. The radio transmitter on everybody's house, you would probably need to change. The meters themselves might need to be changed.
It would be too costly to go down that road.
Is one of the components down here the modem we just replaced?
Modem.
Did we replace the modem just within the last year?
No, it's been three or four years ago. I think we replaced the modem up there, and I want to say that was at Comcast expense. I'm going to watch you ask something like that from the tower.
I thought there was something that we replaced up there at the tower within the last year and a half anyway.
There was one component.
What, what was that?
It's one of the things I've blocking out, and they were a rectifier. We replaced one of the forward ratifiers. That's what it's called.
Thirteen-year-old piece of IT equipment. I'm fine at thirty-five.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve the emergency tower communication expenditure for not to exceed thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Can we roll call please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Community Development Director, Rich Murphy.
Hello, everybody, commissioners. Couple items I'm trying to work with here. First item, Boone Labs is here with three new permits, facility permits before you'd be approved. The Boone family is here, Rick Boone, Matt Boone, Eric Horn. You'll remember they were just approved, they managed, need by the planning commission for their expansion of their operation to grow on process facility at Row 700 Center. Really cool project, upwards of thirty jobs could be added. Admittedly, several employees, twenty-five homeless in Buchanan. A lot of young people is part of their potential operation. So certainly an exciting project in corridor of Buchanan, which has been long dormant. And now potentially with a clean and high-tech jobs in the facility. I have received their applications, I find them up to be in order. The adult use processing permit, the adult use grow permit, and the medical grow permit. This adds to their already approved medical process permit. And all, all city departments have given their approval and their recognitions for approval, so. The Boones are here if they have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Miss receive, planning commission unanimous approval, right?
Correct.
Is there any feedback from that meeting we should know about?
Uh, typically, as we've had with some of the other petitions, there was some discussion on odor and traffic and we talked extensively about those details and where ventilation would be directed. And the double scrubbing technology that they're implementing, which is one of the first of its kind in the country. So it's pretty impressive stuff.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, I think I sent the letter out before, and one of the things would be the first end of its kind, the technology. It's that new, it's self-contained pod, it's not like a typical grow, or is it open, this is a contained unit, so you have more control of the environment. So the product is better, as well as the, how many of these circumstances. So it's more of a controlled environment than other forms.
I want to add that their permit fees have been submitted as well.
I'm just curious, uh, do you have a contingency plan in case we get complaints in our neighborhood?
Sure, there's carbon filters we looked at, there's remote carbon filters we could add in along with the HV system. And we also went to a trade show, they have what you would call portable filter systems. The carbon base that you can wheel, if we find an area that maybe, might be an area of problems, which we don't expect at all. But it can be actually rolled in, we looked at it at a trade show, four twenty. And it was really interesting, you can actually wheel it to that certain area, if you find an area that might be an issue.
And I'll also add, one of the things they agreed to during the planning commission meeting was to move their exhaust fans away from the residential side of their building to the, the parking lot side of their building.
So they'll be moved from where they're currently displayed here to the-
Right, they're currently on the east, they, they've agreed to move them to the west half of the building, so.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and Mr. Downey, what, what we did explain last time is we do not use any chemicals whatsoever in our process, so it, it's not like any other processing lab that has been done anywhere near here. So there's way, way less, less odor whatsoever, you won't really have, I've been to one in Colorado, and you couldn't even smell anything unless you were inside.
Thank you.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I move to approve the adult use processing facility permit to four Boone Labs as presented, pending a satisfactory background check.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we roll call please?
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Caris?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Uh, next item is asking the commission to consider scheduling an annual recurring joint meeting with the city commission, planning commission, and Buchanan Area Recreation Board, which is a requirement of the redevelopment ready certification. Some potential agenda items could be park updates, truck lots, capital improvement plans, we're open to other ideas. A lot of the impetus for our, our city redevelopment ready communities is to have this kind of intergovernmental or inter-agency collaboration. We've seen some success on that recently with some of our trail efforts with the township, and certainly with BAR and the planning commission, so. This is one of the kind of items we can tick off on our report card and move down the path, always moving forward to the certification, the redevelopment ready certification, which that opens up other funding doors for us, as you're aware.
That one's a no-brainer, but.
Mm-hmm. Did, sorry, back up, did we need to make motions on B and C, or can that be all inclusive?
Yeah, if you could add, make the whole motion, or do another motion that just includes B and C?
Yeah, sure, I thought we missed two.
Could you amend your motion, Cameron, to include A, B, and C under Boone Labs?
I thought we were gonna do each one, too.
Yeah, I thought so, too. I move to approve the adult use, I mean-
Processing permit.
Processing permit.
The adult use grow permit.
The adult use grow permit and the medical grow facility permit as presented, pending a satisfactory background check.
Thank you, you still support?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, alright.
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Alright, would anybody like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to schedule an recurring joint meeting?
Sean, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to schedule an annual recurring joint meeting between the city commission and planning commission and Buchanan Area Recreation Board to help the city achieve and maintain RRC certification.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we roll call please?
Downey?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Caris?
Next item is for the commission to consider approving the five thousand dollar membership fee for the city Buchanan to join the Southwest Michigan Regional Chamber. I think commissioners are aware of the strong relationship that we've had with the Southwest Michigan Regional Chamber over the last year or so. They've really been the one steady, tried and true agency to answer the phone for us, to show up for us, answer questions on technical assistance that we had as we submitted applications to the state, to other agencies. They opened media doors for us, got publications, food connections for press releases, and they were able to answer questions for me on a set, of several grant proposals regarding the economic impact of the visitor and some of those numbers in the Bay Area counties, so. I think this opportunity sets up maybe the next relationship with, with them to further leverage their relationship. And I'm supportive certainly of Arthur and Sarah, Arthur had a second seat here tonight. You know, they were kind of there when nobody else was there for us, picking up the phones, showing up, and so I really would encourage you to consider this. I don't know if Arthur has any policies he would like to make, but if you guys have any questions for him, he's here.
I'd just like to make the statement on the record that this is part of the reason why we are, we're, we're in our disgruntled with Jeff Ray. Because Jeff Ray never put in the effort, never, he always wanted us to go and reach out to him and pull him into the community, instead of him playing the role that he had been paid to do for two years to the tune of approximately sixteen thousand dollars, and that's why we pushed back on that last one. However, what we've gotten out of the Southwest, Southwest Regional Chamber is exactly what, I mean, Sarah was at the PERC event, was it just last week? Right? I mean, that's, that's indicative of who I believe a, a chamber is, and that's what they represent, and so I think that's, you know, appreciated greatly.
Well, and I, and I'm, sorry, and I know they played a big role helping you figure out the social district stuff, um, and, which I appreciate, thank you. But then also, after the, the discussions that Heather and Mark and I have had with, with some county officials, I, I think it's as important a time as ever to be involved regionally. There's money in Lansing that we need to go get, and we need to do it as a region, not as a city. That's why I think it's absolutely critical that we, you know, we, we gang up on Lansing as much as we can, honestly.
So, not to take anything away from Southwest Michigan Regional, because I fully support this, I just wanted to make a clarifying comment. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want there to be any misconception when Rich made the comment about no one else being there to help us, that Buchanan Chamber, who's present in this room, is incredibly active, but I think that comment has meant more of a regional perspective, which I wholeheartedly agree with. I see firsthand what Arthur's team does, I attend a lot of those events, I've heard Arthur prop up Buchanan in a room full of people from St. Joe, I see him prominently display Buchanan Chamber information at his office. And I know he supports Buchanan.
Yeah, I mean, the Buchanan Chamber goes without saying, they're there of course every day. This is for the regional groups and deciding where we're gonna put our investment and actually quantifying the rate of returns, that's for clarification.
Yeah.
Buchanan Chamber has been a fantastic day-to-day basis for us.
If you don't mind, I would just like to add that we really appreciate working with the city, with Heather, with Rich, who's been a guest. And we've enjoyed our relationship with Buchanan Chamber as well, with Ashley and Fran. I think we've been able to partner and do some really good things. I think, you know, as Rich said so kindly, this is about the next phase and partnership. You guys sit in and have, you've had incredible foresight in so many investments you've been making to grow this community, to grow businesses, to take Buchanan to the next level. Our desire is to partner with the city and the Buchanan Chamber to take it to that next level. Please, when you come to see it, I'll be in Lansing, in Lansing on Wednesday, and I'll see if I can do enough on them. And after that, Sarah and I will both be in Lansing after a meeting with legislators and talking about some of the funding that's out there. After that meeting, we're coming down to the annual meeting. So, we might be a little bit late, but we'll be late. So thank you for considering this.
Thanks, Scott.
Arthur, can you tell us all a little bit about what you've done to help us so far, and explain the tier level in the membership to the, the membership?
Yeah, so I will start with a little bit about the chamber itself. We're a five oh one C six advocacy organization. C six is different than C three because it can do a limited amount of advocacy work. Or put it another way, basically lobbying for specific bills or funding on behalf of our members. We have about seven hundred members spread regionally throughout Bari, Cass, Van Buren, Tom. The majority of our members are in the St. Joe and Harvard area, but that's actually becoming more diversified by today as, you know, we get into more areas and help more communities, cities, townships, and businesses in those cities and townships are investing us from all over the region. And so we help our members basically through what we call our four pillars of service. Advocacy, networking, visibility, and benefits. Those are all somewhat self-explanatory, and we've done a couple of things in each one of those pillars for the city of Buchanan from the social district to answering some questions about grant funding or resource for market analyses, with work with businesses to help them start and grow. We partner with Buchanan Chamber to do events in this community, or promote events in this community. I always consider chambers sort of like a gym membership. If you have a membership, if you don't engage, you're not gonna see the results, right? So the more you engage, the more you're gonna see it. You guys have been really great about engaging your chamber locally and regionally. And you'll start to see dividends here, you're seeing our goals to get you more than you're picturing.
What about the, the, I mean, you've spent a lot of money already tonight. So the five thousand dollars, what, what are your tier levels, and what do they include?
So, we have a cascading list of benefits, and of course, on the tier based on the number of employees and the number of engagement you wanna have. Our base business membership starts at three hundred dollars, and then it basically doubles until you get all the way to about fifteen thousand dollars. And some folks invest even more than that. The five thousand dollar tier is our community partner tier, or I should say community, is the exact terminology. And then we have a regional, which is ten thousand, and our pivotal partner, which is the fifteen and above. You guys are performing at a pretty high level, and for that level, you would give basically top-tier visibility and benefits that we provide, it's all listed on a sheet of paper, clearly what you will get. But also, we're a phone call away, so you can hear, playing a more active, engaged role than we have been.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Anybody like to make a motion?
Yeah, so I think Arthur hit a key piece on there, so, Ashley, Rich, I know you'll do this, but leverage them for all five thousand dollars of this, 'cause I think it's, I do think it's well worth it, just knowing what I've seen firsthand.
A lot, a lot of the value that they can bring is they talk to a lot of different communities, other municipalities. And if that municipality has gone through or implemented this, they basically can show us the path. And that's what they've done in several circumstances. And that's that, again, the regional, that regional, that resources that they have, because they're speaking to the plan we had.
So I'll move to approve the five thousand dollar membership fee for the city to, to the Southwest Michigan Regional Chamber.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we roll call please?
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Caris? Good.
Uh, thank you very much. Next, next item is zoning code review. So, I updated the planning commission the other night on this project. You know, when I first came to Buchanan, not on accounting, the zoning code is, is almost twenty years old. What we're facing here is a lot of the things that are proposed or discussed, our zoning code is not, is silent on. And, or doesn't give as much traction on, and that's just very typical. It's lived its, its useful lifetime, it needs to be updated, I don't think anyone disagrees. The challenge is to find out, find a kind of rock star consultant that has worked with a place like Buchanan before, and, and really knows the tool that we need already. And so, that was really my concern as I began to reach out to other planning directors around the state of Michigan and Indiana, and talk to municipal league, talk to some chamber people, some various chamber people across Michigan, and county DC, and the one name that constantly rose to the top was a consultant called Placemaker. And so, I reached back to Professor Andrew Lamarr, who led the Andrews University Buchanan project. And he said, I regularly collaborate with them on zoning project overhauls. If, if you can work with them, they, they can get you under schedule. If you can work with them, if they can get you under schedule, this is a great opportunity. So I talked to Heather about it, and we reached out to Hazel Borries, the principal, and she would love to work with us, and we had a discussion initially. And not only would she love to work with us, but she would put a team together that would include her, her principal Susan Henderson, and Andrew Von Mar. And what that means is that Von Mar brings a six-month experience of knowledge to the zoning overhaul project. And I was like, we found who we want to work with, this is going to be amazing. We can really set up Buchanan's zoning code to, you know, guide the direction we want to go as a community for the next fifty years or twenty-five years. And so at the same time, Heather was talking to RRC communities, we go on to the great communities, and they gave us a verbal pledge of thirty thousand dollars towards this project. And so we submitted our original, just from one-page proposal, we kind of get on the radar. And so we have, I think, a great opportunity for us, in front of us. I am excited about the project, and we know who I'm going to be working with. We can engage the community with a really good committee. These projects, I've done one before in Michigan City, in a former community. They take, typically, they could take over a year. It's ours, I don't think will take quite that long, but there's just a lot of proposals, and then refining and editing, and then there's a whole adoption process that the consultant will lead us through that includes planning commission approval and then city commission approval. So I think what we're looking for is consideration of approval of what's been submitted in the contract. And I mean, they're willing to get started pretty quickly. I think late May, early June, begin some of the site meetings, and I'll have to work hard to put together a committee. Typically, that would be, you know, someone from the planning commission, someone from the city commission, other groups we could discuss how best to move that community forward.
So break it down a little bit. Explain exactly what these people are going to do for us.
Basically, they're going to rewrite our entire zoning ordinance by a more user-friendly, electronically accessible, and with exhibits and pictures that instruct you online with the download sections that are pertinent to what you're doing, whether it's commercial, residential, or whether you want a fence put in. There's basically, because of their wealth of experience, working with many hundreds of towns across the United States and Canada, they will be able to propose best practices based on some goals, and certainly from the Andrews Project Foundation, that will really allow us to, you know, guide our community the right way. So it's really a soup-to-nuts zoning, completely new zoning ordinance, and it's desperately needed right now. So, you know, there's a lot that have changed, there's a lot of things that have changed in twenty years that need to be addressed in this document. Instead of kind of picking it apart and trying to fix it, and, you know, twenty-five bandages all around, it's just time to realize that we need to have a new ordinance. The development community or the residents expects something more accessible, so.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I'm in support. Unfortunately, this is one of those things like, you know, doing electrical in your house or plumbing in your house. It's nothing shiny, but it's got to be done. And our zoning ordinance right now, just from sitting on the planning commission for the short time that I have, you know, it's been copied and pasted, and there's strange things in there that look like they don't belong. And it's a mishmash of, I mean, you can imagine what it looks like based on some of the other things we've come across since the old administration left. But it's time for an upgrade with as much activity as we have. And I see the amount of work that Rich has to do trying to figure out our ordinance. And I think Ralph can probably attest to it too. It's, the current one is a mess, and it's not user-friendly either for the city or for people who are looking to, you know, do a project in the city. And I, it's just one of those things. And I think if you're getting, you know, more than half of it paid for, then it's a no-brainer, in my opinion.
I do appreciate you guys coming to it with sixty percent of it already paid for, non-taxpayer funds. So that makes it a lot easier for me.
Any questions? Any, no questions, maybe they want to make a motion?
Sean, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement to engage in the services of placemakers to update the city's zoning code pursuant to the terms proposed in the agreement.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, a roll call please.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Caris?
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it, this is an exciting project, and I really feel confident in certainly the likes of us.
I mean, just as a side note, I mean, I appreciate the fact that you all voted yes, because we have a map currently of the streets that no one can read. And even when you blow it up, it just makes the blurry things that much blurrier. So it's huge. I mean, what we're doing is huge.
Does it make that, what, because their graphics, their presentations are amazing. Are those interactive eventually, or is that just?
Yeah, it will be.
Two-D or not?
It will be a completely, you know, twenty-twenty-two online downloadable interactive document.
Which currently we do not have.
Right now we have PDF that's, if you download it, it's searchable, so that's, it's something. You know.
I've put in it nicely.
Lots of stuff is searchable.
Yeah.
Again, it's really about what's not in the ordinance.
Yeah.
And then, you know, that doesn't position our community to really defend itself or guide itself the way it wants to go. It's just, we're silent on some of that stuff. It opens us up for things you might not want to, want to support or guide.
For what it's worth, this is going to open a lot of doors in the development world. Professional developers who operate on a large scale, if they see we work with placemakers and we can present our zoning code to them in this professional manner that's user-friendly, it goes a long ways. Rich and I are coordinating, there's some Community Economic Development Association of Michigan, or CEDOM, opportunities coming up to liaise with some of these developers. And it'd almost be embarrassing to come when they're like, well, can I see your zoning code? Hmm, I don't know that I want to show it to you. So this would be helpful.
I mean, this also is another step towards redevelopment for our communities.
Absolutely. It's required to get certified, yeah.
So we're actually, this thing that we came to with this roadmap, that we said it's going to take time, we are ticking off some boxes tonight.
So this takes the straw out of our mouth when we show up at the party this time, right?
Come on, come on, play.
Excellent. Thank you, Rich.
The other items that we.
You got more, I thought you were done.
We'll get us on up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'll start with the Main Street Committee progress update. We had our second board meeting last week, and it's just a great group. I started getting a probably a test that it's very exciting to work with these people. They're excited, they have great energy, they're determined, hardworking, well-rounded, and it's just, it's been a joy to work with them. We have our recurring meeting schedule set. We have our subcommittees and who, which board members are going to serve on which subcommittee set. We have our responsibilities for those subcommittees and first steps for those groups set. And then we are defining our goals, developing our strategies, and determining the means to reach those. We've been reaching out to similar communities, including Three Rivers Niles, to see how they've been doing Main Street, how they've been funding Main Street, to see if we can get some leg up there as we start our journey. Next steps are going to be to develop bylaws, to determine the Main Street area, to draw that map. And all that's going to be taking place in the next month, those first steps. So I'm really excited about the progress and how quick it's moving. It's really a great group.
Two things. For the group, is it possible to get the days that the other subcommittees are meeting? Just in case we wanted to be involved, or there was a topic that tied in with our group and our subcommittees that we would want to attend? If you just send that out to everybody.
Yeah, it is in the.
Oh, okay. I just figured if we get an email, everybody can look at one email and have that. It's a concise opportunity to schedule their day. Oh, it was in reference to the choosing of the volunteers for that group. I think it's something that we could take away for our other committees that we get volunteers for, that the amount of opportunity they had to look at the diversity of the people who were applying, right? And I think that's how you ended up with such a diverse group, is that it took every, it took a multitude of information to choose those individuals, so just something for us to think about.
Do you guys have any questions for Main Street?
Do you plan on doing like a quarterly report showing our progress with that?
I can do it time-based if you prefer. I was planning on doing project-based to let you know the, as we develop projects, letting you know the progress updates on that. For example, this map project that we're beginning, which defines the Main Street area, is one of the first things we need to do, so then I'd update you on that. And we are going to work in conjunction with, you know, the zoning and other groups that have similar goals and so that we're all, you know, on the same wavelength. So I'll go on to Chamber update. We do have a new website, I've been working on that for a while, and it's finally up and running. It is BuchananAreaChamber.com, so if you guys want to check it out, it looks pretty good, if I do say so myself. But just email me privately if there's like a typo, I'll take care of that. We have new members, we've been since twenty-twenty-two, so, you know, the past three, four months, we've been averaging about four new members a month, which is pretty exciting. Some of these businesses I hadn't heard about, I didn't know they'd popped into town and they found us. And so that's really exciting that we're getting that coverage, we're getting that buzz, our members are out there talking about us. And so that's really, really fun to see new people coming to us too, instead of us always reaching out to them. They want to be a part of it, so that's really exciting. The events are coming back, which I know they were on pause because of COVID. But we had our chili walk, which had great attendance, we had over three hundred people, and it was a really fun time. We had over twenty chilis, I think we had twenty-one, twenty-two. Our perk breakfasts are back. If you guys were there Friday for Soldier and their new purchase of the Stark School, it's really exciting to see what Jen is doing in the area and the plans for that. And our next one is May twenty, and that's going to be at Life Action, which is also a super cool, wide-scale organization here at Buchanan. And then we're also bringing back education workshops. And we have a plan for a safety workshop this summer, it has not been announced yet, but with Kelly from the Shapps Department. So that'll be a free benefit to our members, which is what we've been focusing on growing, is how can we give more benefits for our members? You know, why would they want to join us? What are we going to give them? So marketing has improved, we're getting a lot of attention from media outlets. I know you guys have seen our news articles spreading around there. We have some great friends in the Niles Daily Star, South Bend Tribune has picked up some of our stories. So that's been really great. And then the Southwest Regional Chamber has been really helpful in sharing our stories too. Social media has been growing, we get a bunch of new followers regularly, so there's attention there, and we're growing, and it's very exciting.
Awesome.
If you guys have any questions, make up the chamber. Throw on the hill, did you guys, did you guys want to speak about the? Okay, come on. We have a proposal to consider from the Lions Club, and then I can give you a quick progress update.
Hi, I am here with the Lions Club, own a new business that's getting ready to come into, well, slowly coming into Buchanan. Twelve hundred K, we own a boat type of bus, has its tax on it, serving anything from beer, wine, cocktails, lemonade, you name it. So what the goal is, is to locate the bus on Building three twenty-four property for Throw on the Hill, the weekend of Throw on the Hill, and it would be a fundraiser for the Lions Club. It would be within the gated area. We wish to make sure we get all IDs for every single person that we serve. And so the lawyer coming to you today asks for a special event permit for Throw. Or something, maybe, I'm just trying to speed it up.
I just had one question on the email here that brought up local police are hired to check IDs.
At least that's what Rainy was telling me, that for the twenty-one up and for the concert, that the police weren't, no, okay.
It's a big no.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's see.
Sorry, that was a miscommunication.
All right. So you have people checking IDs, they'll have wristbands, that's from what I'm reading.
I believe that's when they would do the concerts in the evening, correct him, when they would have drinks, there's twenty-one and over in that, but you weren't checking them, they had.
They're not checking the.
But you were in the area.
Right, the people who have the liquor license are responsible for checking the IDs.
Right, you guys were present, yeah, they had a presence, but you.
People have presence, yes.
Okay, okay.
Would we be already coming out checking ID, I mean, that's already, that's already what we're doing. We, I was just told that during that time, that there would be extra help, but either way, we've got this.
Are you TIPS certified?
No.
Okay, and then TIPS training, they teach you how to look for a bad ID? And there are numerous ways that people can get those off. It's becoming more and more difficult now, but you've probably considered signing up for that real soon.
What were the, what were the hours for this? I'm sorry.
Well, we haven't set our particular hours, and we were going off of what obviously Throw was, but if Throw was opening up at ten AM, we would not like to be down there serving at ten AM before, you know, the evening for that, and definitely for the concert and for the whole, you know, the adult, so.
I'm, is this their layout? You know what I mean?
Yeah, right here.
Has Tim, have you had a chance to look at this?
I'm not sure what you have, so.
It's kind of a layout of where they plan on doing things at.
It is the layout.
Oh, then, yes, I have.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm sure they're also going out that for as far as I've heard, that there most likely won't be alcohol at Throw on the Hill unless somebody else, you know, if we don't do it, I haven't heard anybody else coming out. That's a big thing for, for the event in my.
Who used to do it, the Moose?
Yeah.
The Moose had their liquor license, so.
Did they get theirs this year?
Don't know. I have not, it hasn't came across my desk to sign.
We both have the capacity, we don't have the volunteer staffing to do the big event that they tell us. They would rather do something more aligned with their mission this year, which they're considering doing challenges. So they would rather be involved with something more aligned with the mission this year. I think that's a possibility. And then we've been in conversations about renting out their parking lot, provide more parking space, and then another opportunity for funding for the program. So this is the direction we'd like to go, to the Moose people, and their mission and with their personnel. And then we have, and we have a neighbor.
Something good to me. Anybody want to make a motion?
Sean, I'll make a motion to approve the request from the Lions Club.
Thank you, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, can we roll call please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey? Swam?
Yes.
Caris?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Heather, will you copy of that, that would be.
Okay, certainly. So just a quick update for Throw. We've had a really great planning group, we've had a diverse representation in that planning group with members from D W, water, police, fire, entertainment, parks, youth, financial, and events in Buchanan. So it's been basically. fire, entertainment, parks, youth, financial and events in Buchanan. So it's been basically everything Thrill touches. We've had at least one person that represents that group. Uh, we've been meeting since February and we were meeting every two weeks. We've recently kinda talked through most things we need to talk through that were the initial planning and now it's more on the city to get the rest done, which includes all the rentals. So so far I have secured a tent, which you guys can see in the layout. Uh, the white circles or kind of rounded squares next to the tent are covered round seedings. They have umbrellas just so we have a little bit additional coverage if it rains or if it's real hot, just so we can keep people safe, um, and protected from the elements. Porta potties, we are going to close on that tomorrow. We will have, I don't know if you guys can tell, it says porta jons in that bright blue. So we'll have regular porta jons over in the Moose parking lot, um, including handicap. And then we'll have a trailer porta jon over in the building three twenty-four parking lot, which will provide a staging area for our families as well. Um, just because of the nature of it, which I hope will keep them there longer. Will keep them there all day. So I'm hoping that improving the facilities also improves the money they bring to Buchanan because they don't wanna run home and change. Or if they run home and use the bathroom, they're there all day, which will help us with our finances. Um, also, we've reached out to businesses and organizations and our restaurants with a notice that this was taking place and asking them how they wanted to be involved in the event. So there's a checkbox that if they wanna have, um, they wanna have a vendor place, a vendor activity, a, like a youth activity, if they wanna have stage time. And there's any way they wanna be involved, they can. So, I mean, I haven't had anyone ask for a way they can't be involved yet. I'm sure there is one, but. Um, so we've been getting some good feedback there and a lot of our businesses are taking place. They're giving out products, they're hosting. Uh, like our, the Buchanan Area Senior Center wants to do a cotton candy machine. They just give out cotton candy all day and we would say no to that. So we've had a lot of great, um, involvement from our businesses and organizations. Um, and then we are reaching out to our vendors because there is going to be the Farmer's Market Saturday. Do they want to do more? Do they want to be involved further? So that may adjust our site plan. We may have to spread out and be in other places depending on how many vendors. Um, yeah. And then sponsorships, we've been getting a steady flow of sponsorships. So far, all of our expenses have been covered in sponsorships. That might not last, but so far, so good. Do you guys have any questions on that? I know you had some earlier, the safety commission. Is there anything that I can?
I think we beat it up pretty good.
Okay, then. Moving on to the common usage and policy. If you guys have already had time to review it and you don't have any app, uh, any concerns about the application or policies, then
Does anybody have any questions or comments about it?
I'll move to approve the newly amended common usage policy as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Carrys?
Okay. Next, we have had, if you guys received the calendar or the list of events. Uh, as you can see, we're filling up and it's very exciting to see the commons so used for the summer months. Uh, there's a lot going on. I mean, nearly every week, there's something fun happening at the common and almost every weekend. There's still some days available, but, um, it's getting full with requests. So I would love for you guys to look it over and let me know if there's any questions you have on any of these specific events. I might not have all of the answers as they've been, um, especially our single events have been told it's pending approval. So I haven't given them applications to fill out or anything like that. So, but if I, if you have a question that, um, is pressing, I'll give it back to you very soon on, on the event details.
I don't remember. So we don't have any applicants yet, like physi, did we have that in the packet? Did I miss that?
No, we were thinking that we may have them by now, but we wasn't able to.
So there's nothing to motion on.
That was.
Okay. So yeah, when you, when you have them.
You don't have the schedule or you don't have?
Formal applications is what.
Oh, no, 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 because the application was just.
Was the schedule in there too? Did I miss the schedule?
That's what I didn't say, schedule either.
I didn't either.
Oh, there was a calendar with the events listed, but I can briefly go through it or if you guys wanna just trust that I knew exactly what I was doing and put it together, that's fine too.
Yeah, I mean, you just, you just email it to us.
Yeah, if there's anything that falls in the.
I think there's nothing that falls in, um, nothing that comes to my attention as needing to be debated, um, in the sense that special, special interest.
Okay.
Um, there are some religious events, but they're mostly held by BAMA, which is one of our organizations that's inter-congregational. So it's a little bit different. Uh, it's open to the public in a different way. So I can definitely send this calendar over to you, um, for your review. The details are in the, the comment. You can see the details. Um, but yeah, if you have any questions after that, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, can, so the, when would that be approved then? Would you be able to approve it through email?
No.
No. But I don't know. Do we?
If, if you have, if you wouldn't mind going over, um, what's in the calendar and perhaps they could give us adminis, authority to approve them administratively, the ones that have been submitted thus far. And again, informally submitted because the application just got approved this evening.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Okay, so quickly go through the events.
Yes.
Okay. So May through October, we have our Farmer's Market every Saturday from May seventh to October fifteenth. And do I get approval for each one or?
No.
Okay. We have a hold for the National Day of Prayer for May five, um, and then a hold for a Night of Praise. I'm gonna go through all the, um, Christian ones. Another hold for a Night of Praise in June. And I think there's another, and then there's Family Day in August. So those are all our BAMA or religious events that have requested. Okay. Um, we have a kindergarten graduation request for May twenty-fourth. Uh, we have Rick Paniglau at Okazuya Planavista or personally, but wants to do a benefit concert on Memorial Day weekend. And he's also requested, uh, July fourth weekend. The library wants to do their storytime and, um, some other events including Big Truck Day and Stride Day, um, on Wednesday mornings. The Tin Shop has practice for their outdoor show, which they're still determining if that's gonna be for or not. Ram has a benefit, um, eighteenth of June.
Yeah.
So you have a question.
Hey, Heather, do we usually approve every, I mean, the whole concert series approves something by somebody else?
No, that's what this, yeah, no. So that's what I'm just, if you guys just hear of anything that's concerning, you can let us know. If not, just give us continued administrative approval or authority to approve it administratively.
I think we, I trust Heather's judgment.
I mean, I, I trust her judgment too. I do have a question though about, um, when you're, when you take in an applicant like Rick Paniglau, if he doesn't have, um, bands set up or arranged, um, I'm just curious if it's smart to, to book that, you know, to take that slot if you don't have the details of what's going to be happening.
Chicken and the egg, right? Sometimes you can't get it maybe?
Yeah, two, yeah, two things. In the future, they would have to fill out an application. We do receive payment from them independent of their event. Um, it's not a huge charge, but it's independent and it is size-based. So based on their attendance, there would be, and projected attendance. Um, he, because this is a benefit concert, it would be a blanket fee. But if we were doing a ticketed event, then we would, uh, get a percentage of it. Um, but from working in events, if you don't have a date, you can't offer a date. So they really have to, you really have to secure your venue first in, in, in most situations.
Right. You're taking that chance.
Right.
Right. Okay.
In my opinion, in my opinion.
That's how it was.
No, I trust you. I didn't know. That's why I asked.
I believe it.
But we'll definitely continue to monitor and as the event gets closer, if we haven't received details sufficient to, you know, basically make us confident that it'll, it'll be a different conversation and reassessment of that.
And we do ask for the expected size for, um, safety as well. If, if we're, if they're expecting five hundred plus individuals, we need to, you know, warn our police force and.
Well, I mean, the other, the other thing that scares me about, uh, when you said July fourth at the common, it is Red Bud Weekend and there's thirty to sixty thousand people in the area, so.
Yeah, so we're hoping to cap it.
Yeah.
That's what we want. Yeah.
He was here to talk about it, but, um, he was hoping to capitalize on that, but by doing it on, and I can't remember if it was Sunday, well, I guess I can't grab it. Um, he was thinking about doing it Sunday, whereas, you know, Red Bud is primarily Saturday. That's their main day. So yes, there will be a lot of traffic, but he was hoping to take advantage of that by not, but not compete with it.
Okay.
But it is in our calendar, those types of events in like the one hundredth centennial or whatever, are in our calendar so that we can avoid competition if we make events.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I guess I, we don't need to read through everything, I guess. Would someone like to make a motion?
No, you guys got the flavors.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Would someone like to make a motion to, um, grant the city manager authorization to, um, book the commons for the remainder of the season? Anybody like to make that motion?
I'm not gonna, do I have to repeat it in that way?
No, you just say, yeah, I'll make that motion.
I will, I will support, or I will make said motion.
Is there support?
That's good.
Yeah, I'll support. Cause you're not gonna write it out that way either.
All right. Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Carrys?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm almost done. I'm gonna turn this over. Our food vendor permit license, we now have a revolution and a fee schedule, which I'm sure makes a lot of us very happy. So we start scheduling our food vendors. Um, and I'm gonna turn it to Commissioner Grace to explain if you have any questions for me to fill in.
So I'll go over real quickly, uh, before I share the recommended, and again, they're just recommended figures to start the conversation. It's totally up to the discretion of the commission as it's more of a policy decision than anything. Um, based on feedback I'd received a few months back, um, there was a quest to determine, well, what is the tax liability on a daily basis of the average restaurant in Buchanan so that we're getting as close as we can to an apples-to-apples comparison. Obviously, it's never exactly the same. But, um, based on a sampling of restaurants in Buchanan, it's been calculated out that the average daily tax liability, um, just lost it on here. Give me one second here. Why is it not displaying on my PDF? Here we go, seventeen forty-one was the average daily tax liability to be a taxpayer in a brick and mortar restaurant in Buchanan. So protecting that figure forward, um, making the consideration that, um, beyond just paying the fee for what is comparable somewhat to the average tax liability of a brick and mortar restaurant, there's also basically administrative costs that are involved in us processing said applications and considerations versus whether it's on private property and public property. To start the conversation, I was recommending a consideration of a daily use fee on private property of fifteen dollars per day, daily use fee on public property of twenty-five dollars per day, a six-month use fee on private property of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and a six-month use fee on public property of two thousand dollars.
I think that seems fair. Anybody have any questions?
How does that six-month fee work? Is that every day?
It would be if you applied for and paid that fee, then for the six months thereafter, you, you've, you've paid for the, your permit to cover that six-month period. And when that six-month period ends, if you wanna do additional food vending, you have to decide if you wanna purchase an additional six-month license or then thereafter do the daily fees.
But does that daily, so they're assuming they're gonna be doing it seven days a week? What's the breakdown of that six months in the calculations?
Oh, I guess I can do that math for you.
So what we're asking, if somebody could park a trailer down on, uh, by the commons there for six months?
Not as, it's noted on there that a site plan approved by the city of Buchanan is required for that. So it would be a viewed, excuse me, reviewed, um, with the six-month license, they'd have to submit that site plan and that would be open to consideration for the commission to say whether they approve of the proposed location for a six-month period. So there's that other layer to make sure that it's approved that way.
So only on the six months, we have to make a decision on, uh, daily uses or just?
Daily use is just admin, yeah. The, the city administration would cover that. Yeah.
Makes sense to me. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Anybody like to make a motion?
Any more thoughts on food vending, Cameron?
No, we have nothing else.
All right. Sean, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution two zero two two dot zero four slash four three three and further authorize the city manager to grant fee waivers to brick and mortar restaurants in the city as well as nonprofits on an administrative basis.
Thank you. Is there support? I'll support. Can we roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Carrys?
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the Buchanan Tree Friends, board appointments. Is there, I don't know if there's anybody here for the Tree Friends?
I don't think so.
Um, anybody like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Daniel Riegel to the Buchanan Tree Friends?
Sean, I'll make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Downey?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Carrys?
Thank you. All right, moving on to unfinished business, uh, the second reading and consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-two point oh three slash four three one, the open burn ordinance. Anything you wanna add?
Um, I'll just share with the public that, um, the previous meetings, this particular ordinance that regulates open burning in the city of Buchanan, as well as the following ordinance, which is also on second read. That refers, when it says second read, to our legislative process as is required under our city charter. Essentially to pass a new piece of legislation or ordinance by our city commission, which is our legislative body. They have to do a first read, which is the opportunity for the public to become aware of the proposed ordinance. There's an opportunity to publicly comment during that meeting or anytime thereafter. At a subsequent regularly scheduled meeting, there's a second reading that's this point before it can be fully approved. So if it is indeed passed second reading, which is up to our consideration this evening, thereafter, it becomes effective and binding once it's published in a generally circulating newspaper, which we do after, um, said motions are approved. So this vote tonight would determine whether it in fact takes, um, binding effect after publication.
Thank you. Is there, uh, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the, the burn ordinance?
Sean, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance two zero two two dot zero three slash four three one on open burning.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Carrys?
Thank you. Moving down to the second reading and consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-two point oh three slash four three two, revised parking ordinance.
I'll move to approve the second reading of the ordinance two zero two two dot zero three slash four three two on parking.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Carrys?
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to communications.
So I'm very excited to update both the commission and the public at large. We will be installing this Wednesday a new telephone communication system here at City Hall. Sometimes we're a little slower than the general public or the private sector on IT upgrades, but we are moving to a voice-over internet protocol or VoIP phone system. This will enable us to have better efficiencies, more streamlined, um, call forwarding to other departments. So if you call into City Hall with a question, say specific to the Water Department, you can, with a touch of a button, get forwarded directly to the right department, rather than having to share a communication with our City Hall staff who then has to contact someone at Water Department. So we're anticipating better service levels and better and quicker, faster communication respond times. So we're very thrilled to offer that service and, uh, that's the gist of that.
Thank you. How about number two?
So we're seeking public input at this time for, um, the development of new economic incentive programs, uh, specifically for our downtown. Right now, we're considering new programs that would offer rear facade grants and facade meaning basically the exterior view of the building. Um, especially in light of our proposed twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four redesign and reconstruct project for our downtown area. There will be some heartburn, as it were, due to the fact that the road's gonna be ripped up pretty much storefront to storefront for a continued period of time. So we wanna enable our downtown business owners to have an opportunity to improve rear entries to their buildings, um, whether that be through, you know, just improvements to the facade itself. We're also considering wayfinding signage upgrade grants, um, so that folks can better navigate their intended customer base to their loca- customer base to their location for better point of sale. We're thinking about maybe also potential grant incentives that would improve, excuse me, improve or increase outdoor dining options, whether that be rooftop, if it's allowed under zoning, perhaps, you know, balcony-style dining in some situations or even just ground-level outdoor dining. So, lots of different options to approve both the commercial experience of our downtown and the way we're going to navigate the hardships associated with our redesign and reconstruct. But we're really open to any ideas any business owner, customer, any person has to help us to do that. So, now would be a great time to just give us a call at City Hall, shoot us an email, stop in, whatever you desire. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's time for public comment on non-agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your, make your way to the podium and state your name for the minutes.
My name is Paul James Jr. from the Hamilton Township. I'm a very kind of chief public defender. I'm running for district court judge. It's an open seat right now. I am unopposed currently, so I'm the only option. Look at the background. I'm a lifetime resident of Barren County. I grew up in Barren Springs, then moved to St. Joe and the family, graduated from St. Joe, then attended University of Notre Dame, graduated there, then Michigan State Law School, and then I've been working in Barren County for my entire career since two thousand and nine. I'm mainly doing criminal defense work, mostly in the defense, meaning I represent individuals who can't afford to turn, not charge a crime. Over time, it's become a kind of a larger portion of my career until I find myself as your chief public defender for the last two years. Married my wife now, fourteen years, Monica, we have three sons, ages four, six and eight. As your chief public defender, I have prided myself on elevating professionalism in the Barren County Public Defender's Office. I drafted a complete policy manual, listed and shared across the state, really adopted statewide. Also, improving our relationship with law enforcement has been a big part for me. There's one way to do criminal defense work and that's to be an ultra-strikt law enforcement. So, that's kind of a priority for us. Holistic defense also has been a priority for me. I have the two first staff social workers for the Public Defender's Office to connect our image clients with established social support services in Barren County, which there are many. Many times our clients come to us, they have issues with transportation, housing, education, one of these things of this nature. We connect them with established services in our, in our county to hopefully reduce recidivism so we don't see them again ultimately. I think that's, everybody can get behind that. As a judge, I intend to do much the same thing that I've done, which is collaborate and communicate with communities. There's a lot of interested stakeholders in our communities that are issues that the court can solve. Obviously, I can't talk to you about individual cases, but general community issues I can. So, I intend to continue visiting municipalities, probably not at the same rate that I am now, but that's my plan. So, I would ask for your vote with an agree. Again, I'm Paul James Jr. I'm a Paul Steedman James. I'm the only one about, so I ask your vote.
Thank you very much for coming. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Hi, y'all. I'm here in the last city center. Really glad. Got a toddler at home. Probably getting my husband a lot. So, I'm sorry. I'm going to look at where we can rent. So, I'm just really pleased to hear that you guys are putting together a new ordinance. I have a huge issue with, uh, listing of ordinance and just safety factors. Do you guys have anything in place as of now for inspection?
Would you please use the microphone? Yeah, sorry. It is on.
Better. Okay. Do you guys have anything in place now for inspections, safety or anything in that regards?
Related to?
Rental units for zoning, safety?
We're currently working on some new policies because our old policies are either not working or nonexistent. So, the, the answer to your question is no, not really.
Okay. We're currently working with the lawyer, which, I mean, it's not an issue, but we do like living here. So, it is a concern for staying here in the future and purchasing a home because obviously they've already had two fires, to put it nicely. That's one of the reasons we're leaving is because safety of fire issues. It's very hard to justify my husband volunteering at the fire department and having him like have to run into the own building you live in. So, what's your guys' deadlines for that?
I guess, I guess I'm trying to figure out. So, do you, do you live at Westman Apartments, Miss Minn? And do you have an issue currently with management?
Uh, no, with safety of the building. It's not even with the management.
Have you, have you contacted the police or the fire department?
Uh, yeah, I contacted, yes. Did, I left a message.
Did man?
Yes.
I, I mean, I would suggest.
I'm a little confused why it's not the fire department doing the inspections. They're generally trained on.
I would, I would make a suggestion of, of getting with Chief Gainis.
Get him to talk and I'll get you in the right direction with the right people to have a conversation with so we can look into it.
Oh.
Chief Gainis is our director of public safety and also leads with our fire department, oversees that department.
So, then really.
It's hard for you to give me a call.
Okay, but do we have anything to back that up legally?
Well, I don't, I'm not sure of the issue. I'm not sure you want to make that public, but I, I, I think that, I mean, without knowing what the issue is, I think if you get with, with Chief Gainis, he can point you in the right direction and we can try helping you solve whatever issue it is that you have. Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Um, okay, seeing, seeing, seeing no other public comments, let's move to city manager comments.
So, I, I always say this, but I don't want everyone to not say it. Thank you, everyone, for attending our meetings. Your knowledge and steadfastness to say these longer meetings is greatly appreciated. It's your participation that makes our democracy work and thrive. Always know that we are here to serve you. That's why we exist as a governmental entity. Even if you don't necessarily want to share your comments publicly during an open public meeting, we're here to talk. If you have a concern, we're open to having dialogue, hearing ideas. Know that that input is appreciated greatly. We're very much pleased with the progress that we're making in building our community relationships, public and private partnerships. So, also if you have ideas in that realm, if you think that there's some way we could be better working with our community partners or stakeholders, that's something we're very much open to as well. So, I just want to keep crowdsourcing that knowledge from our area. There's no one person who's smarter than all of us. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Whedon? Mr. Swam?
No comment.
Mr. Downey?
No, sir.
I just want to, I want to second what city manager Grace said. I appreciate all of you being here and I mean that, I mean that. I want you to encourage your friends to come with you next time. One of the most frustrating things about, about serving on the city commission is the amount of misinformation and misinformed people who spread falsehoods and make comments that are not true. It's really frustrating. It's a frustrating thing to be a part of. And so, I, I really mean it when I say thank you for coming and staying informed. It's really important. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Can we roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Say, listen, listen, hold on. I feel like I've talked to you.